Wait, I'm gonna make sure. You just give me the number. We have a meeting tomorrow night, right? Make sure.
You can see us?
All right. Do you want to have to call it? Okay, we're gonna call to order the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, September 11th at 5:15. Go on.
Commissioner Ernst?
Here.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here. And so we're gonna go ahead and ask all the presenters to go ahead and leave the room. Unless you're the YMCA. So if there's any other presenters in the room, we're gonna ask you to leave the room. Nope, good. And we'll have our first presenter come up.
It is testing. Battery's already dead. And just two seconds ago.
Just give us a couple minutes, we're having some technical difficulties.
There's folks here from another competitor, you might want to make an announcement.
The working? Okay, give us one second. Again, to repeat, can all the presenters please leave the room?
All right, good evening, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so my name is Jason Hagensek and I'm the President and CEO of the YMCA of South Palm Beach County. And it is my pleasure to present to you this evening our vision for what we are affectionately referring to as the Beach and Parks District YMCA. So because of who we are, how we work, and what our primary focus is, we decided to approach this in three different ways. First is we wanted to address the delivery, the requirement that we deliver on a racket and sports facility at the Boca Tica property. But we wanted to make sure that we broadened and leveraged that access to maximize community benefit. Everything that the YMCA does, and you're gonna hear this a couple of times through this evening, is about community benefit. But that requires a different approach, okay? A different approach is focused on a partnership between our YMCA and the Beach and Parks District. It requires us to be flexible, patient, and focused on a shared vision. So when I say shared vision, what do I mean? All right, so our why exists to serve the greater good for all. We don't turn anybody away, we work to support the community, we work to make sure that everybody has access to our YMCA programs, facilities, and membership. Our common goal is meeting the growing needs of our shared community. Our Y's focus is traditionally on healthy living, youth development, and social responsibility. The Y is a charity, we're a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization, we do not have a profit motive. Community impact drives everything that we do, we're about and focused on delivering on community needs. Boca's our home, we've been in this community since, well, for 50 years, since 1972. In fact, we go back before that, when David and Betty Jo Ash helped found what was called the Boca Raton YMCA in the late 1960s. We were delivering programs for the residents in our community. When Peter Blum had the idea to build a YMCA, and at the time, what was considered west, way out west, Boca, they thought he was crazy. They said no kids would ever come to the YMCA that far out. We did it anyway, and now our YMCA is at capacity in pretty much every program and membership delivery area. So we've been here for 50 years, chartered officially in 1972. One unique thing about our YMCA and every YMCA is we're governed by our local community. Okay, but we have 29 members of a board of trustees that direct the YMCA and set policy and procedures and define how our YMCA is gonna meet community needs. So quick facts, there's a lot that we're proud of at our YMCA. I rarely ever lead with our operational or our financial excellence, but we are. This last year, this current year, we're running about a $13 million budget. We employ 80 full-time and 247 part-time employees. We engage 458 volunteers at our two traditional YMCA facilities. One in Boca Raton, which is the Peter Blum family YMCA Boca Raton. The other is in Boynton Beach, which is the DeVos Blum family YMCA in Boynton Beach. But we also enjoy several partners, one of them being NCCI, where we do preschool. We do summer camp programming in West Boynton, and we do partnership with Beach and Parks through the Patrick Park Rutherford Center, where we do year-round programming at that center. We're proud of the fact that we have $20 million in net assets. And I touched on the programming needs or the programming expertise. We deliver about 90 different programs through our YMCA on a weekly, monthly, seasonal, and annual basis through our YMCA, and that includes pickleball. We're full in preschool, after-school, summer camp, full. We need additional space to continue to grow and meet the needs of the community. We have high member satisfaction, our buildings are energetic, they're enthusiastic. People describe our YMCA as safe, welcoming, and fun. We, in the state of Florida, we're one of 16 YMCA's across the country, more than 787 YMCA associations, we're one of the 787. You see 2,500 locations, we're two of the 2,500 locations. Right now, LA or Lifetime Fitness is the largest provider of pickleball in the country. More and more YMCA's, including ours, are getting into pickleball, so it won't be long before the YMCA will be the largest provider of pickleball programming across the country. That means we have a network of support that we get to tap into, leverage, lean on, and get guidance from throughout the course of this effort. And we're a four-star charity-rated YMCA or charity, and we just did receive the platinum from Guide Star as well for the charity work that we do. Everything that we do is about meeting community needs. So we did, as part of the process of determining what our interest in this might be, we did go out and survey the community. Okay, one of the things that we learned is that the community need extends well beyond just racket sports. Pickleball is a proven gateway to other offerings, that's where the YMCA comes in. Fitness and exercise for us and for the community are essential pillars. So pickleball is huge, it's a local opportunity and it's a wellness portal. Of those surveyed, 86%, well, pickleball has grown by 86% year over year. Of those that live in our community, 66% say they are non-players, but they wanna pick up the game. 41% of non-players want to learn to play pickleball. However, fitness center was the stronger performance, 64% wanted a fitness center, 50% wanted group exercise program. So wellness in all is a very high-demand need for us to address in this community. Overall, it was the top-scoring amenity with 56% responding to its appeal. Almost half of those stated their interest in personal training. And what the theme that comes out of all of this is that as people age, they wanna stay active, they wanna stay engaged, they wanna quote, "stay in the game." And they're not ready to give up their active lifestyle, and they're looking for ways that they can continue to do that, and they're looking for partners in the process. Additionally, weightlifting, which is something I have zero interest in, so I kinda buried it at the bottom of this. Additionally, group exercise with strong interest in key wellness mainstays, it was the second-highest appeal amongst the residents that were surveyed. About a third were interested in classes to aid mobility and wellness, and almost two-thirds were interested in specialized arthritis classes. Again, people are looking to stay healthy as long as they possibly can, and they're looking to stay in the game. Beyond that, aquatic swimming is the top-ranked physical activity among residents in South Florida. A third are interested in Aquatic Center for Training and Family Fun, and 29% like drop-in childcare, 30% wanted playgrounds for kids. So what's our vision? We're gonna approach it in three different ways, one is the launch, second is the strategic expansion, and third is the full vision being realized. So the strategy, as I started with, is that the YMCA and Beach and Parks and other entities partner. There's no way we can do this unless it is truly moved forward in a spirit of partnership. We're gonna begin with pickleball. But then in the Y's world, it's around membership and program delivery over and above the racket sports efforts. In order to reduce costs of facility construction, we're using an indoor-outdoor approach and design to make sure that this works from a, from an operational standpoint, from an expense standpoint, and just making sure that we can do it. Now, what that allows is that we're proposing that we build a YMCA unlike any other in the country at this stage. COVID taught us too, is that people wanna spend more time outdoors, and there's the need to, you know, co-mingle indoor-outdoor activities as best you possibly can. So three phases, starting with pickleball, moving towards an expansion, and then fully the school and so forth, will realize the Beach and Parks District YMCA. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about phase one, delivering a broad and compelling set of principal amenities. So the first is leveraging pickleball, everything that we were asked to do centered around pickleball. So you'll see here that we're addressing that with 16 total courts, 10 of them are outdoors, six of them are undercover. Shade, shelter, and bathrooms are important in South Florida. Fitness and group exercise is important to the YMCA, making sure that we can continue to deliver on a membership-based program activity. Child watch, making sure that it's family-friendly, that people can come to the YMCA. And then we've also addressed the opportunity to work with a developer around the food and beverage component. So if, if that's something Beach and Parks desires, if that's something the community desires, we can do that. What's great about that is that it allows us to continue to build on that the Y is a destination place where the community wants to hang out, where families want to spend time together, where they wanna socialize with friends. They don't wanna just spend 30, 45 minutes, they wanna spend more time together doing things as a family, as a neighborhood, which is a wonderful thing. So the wellness studio is in the lower right, as well as the group exercise. Pickleball, we intentionally put pickleball on the left side because we wanna create the sound buffer from the residents. All in, it's about a $9 million investment, 77,000 square feet of activity space. Looking from the southeast corner of the parking lot across outdoor pickleball courts towards the covered courts, you can see there's social gathering spaces, there's games, it's all centered around wellness and active lifestyles. So phase two, it's building out on the critical core offerings and adding youth programs. As a YMCA, we wanna touch on everyone from birth to passing. So we wanna expand on the racket sports, add tennis and paddle. Increase the group exercise venues, introduce the youth development, you see number one there, that's bringing in after-school opportunities and summer camp opportunities. This would be 65,000 square feet of activity space, roughly a $4.2 million budget. You can see the youth building, playground, and outdoor studio mezzanine, the paddle courts, tennis courts, increased parking at this stage, and then future growth. So between this, phase one, we're addressing the immediate need of pickleball and YMCA membership and program space. Moving into this, we're increasing now, we're getting into youth activities, after-school programming, some summer camp, and increased tennis and racket sports. Third is we evolve into a full-facility YMCA. It includes a full-size pool, I believe in the Beach and Parks District studies, aquatic facilities is one of the areas that is in great demand in our community. So this would address that, a splash pad to make sure it's safe and fun for kids and families, a gymnasium, again, everything youth-related in South Florida requires that you have shade, shelter, and restrooms. So as much as we'd like to do things outdoors, in the summer, you have to have shade, shelter, and restrooms to accommodate the kids when the storm rolls in in the afternoon. The wellness building expansion, additional group exercise studio space, and then some soccer mini pitches in the very top. All in, this is 43,000 square feet and another $9 million investment. This would be a one-of-a-kind YMCA at this stage in the game. I can tell you that there have been several communities that have reached out to me and asked me for our data and our designs. So I wanna close just by saying, you know, whatever the decision that you make, and number one, thank you again for allowing us to be part of this process. We've learned a lot about our why, we've learned a lot about our community, we've learned a lot about what we want to achieve as an organization. You're gonna do what's best for Boca and Boca Tica, we hope that we are part of that vision. We recognize that we bring a different approach than your other parties that are part of this. I would say that those four have more in common with each other than any of them have with our why. We are a nonprofit organization, we are solely motivated by meeting the community needs and addressing community needs. But we know you're gonna make the best decision for Beach and Parks and the community of Boca Raton. What I would add is that I would encourage you that we want to be part of the future of this project, whatever that might look like. Our partnership with the Beach and Parks District through the Patrick Park, through John Rutherford Center, anything else that we can do, we would desire. But I wanna go back to this, in 1970, when the Peter Blum family YMCA was first developed, 17 acres of land was donated to our YMCA. That's what made the Peter Blum family YMCA possible. Fast forward to roughly 1999, 2000, the Weaver family, after many, many, many years of trying to find space in northeast Boca and Delray, we couldn't find any. The Weaver family in Boynton Beach donated 15 acres to make the DeVos Blum family YMCA possible. Land in South Florida, South Palm Beach County specifically, Boca Raton specifically, is not getting cheaper. So for a YMCA to further develop assets such as this, it requires a partnership. We would love to partner with the Beach and Parks District to achieve this. I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Is this working? Thank you. Um, thank you for that, you put a lot of work into that, a lot of research, you can see. And I have to say, last time I went to the YMCA when we did that tour, it's a fantastic facility, and you have such great programs, and it was wonderful. And you couldn't tell that the building was, what, 40 years old or whatever?
50.
50 years old?
50.
So.
Multiple renovations and expansions along the way.
So all I can say is good things about the Y, so thank you for your presentation, and so we'll open it up to questions from the board.
First, just wanted to make sure I was on, thank you for coming down, I appreciate the work that you do in the community.
Thank you.
And I know that what the programs you have at Rutherford have been a rip-roaring success, so thank you for that.
We're just getting started on that, too.
Well, that's, that's good news. Um, first question is, for phase one, what is your timeline for completion?
It depends on how quickly, well, it really depends on the partnership. So we don't have any funds raised that we can allocate towards this project. So the first thing we have to do is raise the funds, after we get the approval, raise the funds, design the building past this, this is great visuals, but architectural work has not been done. So I would be, I'd be completely out ahead of my skis if I gave you any kind of a timeline.
Okay.
If we're gonna try and raise roughly $10 million, you would look at reasonably 24 to 36 months would be fast on that, depending on what kind of financing you might leverage in that process. So what we are talking about as a YMCA is working with you on a long-term vision for Boca Tica that involves a YMCA.
Okay, so we're looking at.
I would say realistically, three to five years.
Three to five years out for the completion of phase one?
Yes.
Okay, and my other question was, you mentioned the other two phases.
Yes.
Is that $9 million each or $9 million?
The second one was about $5 million for phase two, and the third one was about $9 million, now that's in today's dollars. So as we know, costs go up quite quickly, so.
So in three to five years or more, that number could be, instead of say 14 million, that could be 18 million?
Easily, I would say that our YMCA just conducted a feasibility study around capital campaign, and we did learn that there was a high level of confidence that we could raise about $26, $27 million for the existing Peter Blum family YMCA. One of the challenges in that process is we don't have a lot of naming opportunities that are left, it's already the Peter Blum Y. So if we were gonna go out and ask for somebody to donate a seven-figure or more gift to our YMCA, they're gonna want their name to be on the building. We don't have a building to put somebody's name on it. So some of the feedback we actually received was, wouldn't it be great if you had another YMCA that you could go out and encourage the community to support?
Yeah, I think we have, I think there's a protocol for naming on our park property.
Yep.
Uh, the other question I had, food and beverage. There, I'm sure you're aware that alcoholic beverages are not, are not allowed on city park properties. And this would require a variance, and variances inevitably throw more, you know, it's another monkey wrench that we have to deal with. Um, would you be amenable to something that scaled down along the lines of maybe a coffee shop or something like that?
As a YMCA, we would more than likely prefer it to be that way.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and thanks again for coming down.
Other questions?
Go ahead, Suzie.
Thank you, Jason, it's good to see you. I had a wonderful tour of the Peter Blum facility with Brian and Anne, and it was incredible. I encourage the public to visit if you get a chance, it's an amazing facility. My kids were there when they were kindergartners, so, and they're in their 30s. Jason, are you looking for funding other than the land bank from the district?
We wouldn't turn down any opportunity to partner, and that includes any funds that Beach and Parks could bring to the partnership, any funds that the city might be able to bring to it. Any leverage that the partnership might give us in talking to local philanthropists. So the answer, short answer is, we'll take whatever we can get. If all we can get is the land and we have to go out and raise the remaining funds, we are confident in our ability to do that. If Beach and Parks has the ability to participate in that, then we would certainly welcome that as well.
Thank you.
And, you know, we, to the earlier question, you know, we do it in phases partially to where we can address some of the funding needs. If someone walked in the door today and offered us $25 million to put their name on this, we'd start the project very quickly.
Well, I think that would be a question for Council Jacob.
The question, excuse me, the question is whether there was a donor that was prepared to help fund your proposal?
We do not have a donor identified yet, it would be premature for us to go out and talk to anybody on it. Um, but, you know, in a community such as Boca Raton, we would be foolish not to believe in our ability to fundraise. Now, 20-plus million dollars is not easy, no matter who you are. Certainly, it's not easy for our YMCA, but we believe in this vision, and we believe that people would support it.
And I would just offer, Commissioner, that the proposal submitted by the YMCA speaks for itself in the context of their opportunity and their funding, and given the presentation this evening, that could all be taken into account as part of the evaluation.
Thank you.
Okay, Craig, Bob, do you have anything?
Yeah, Jason, thank you for your presentation. There was a YMCA in our community that had the only indoor basketball facility and the indoor heated pool. And not that we needed that much in South Alabama, but it still was nice, and I think there's also a residential facility associated with that, you know. As far as the facility and the fee structure, I noted in here that, you know, YMCA is a membership organization. But there also was a comment that you would accommodate folks that didn't have the means to pay a membership. And the fee structure for the recreational, you have to have a membership in order to participate in the, in the overall activities, or can you select activities to pay for individually?
As a membership organization, and I would describe our existing programs and facilities as very traditional YMCA facilities and programs. So the way it's structured right now, you do have to have a membership to participate in programs. You get discounts as a member, you get reduced rates on programs outside to participate in preschool, after-school, summer camp, swim lessons, youth sports, all of the above. What I mentioned earlier about not turning anyone away based on an inability to pay, we provide about $2 million in scholarship and program assistance on an annual basis to make sure that kids and families and seniors can access YMCA programs and activities.
And do you reach out to those individuals in town who are kind of in the shadows, that don't participate? And do you have a way to reach those folks that economically don't have?
The challenge for our YMCA and other YMCA's is all centers are on transportation. So yes, but preschool is full, after-school is full, summer camp is full. So what we need to do in the long-range vision for our Y and long-range vision for how our YMCA addresses the community need, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, is we have to identify new locations. So the ideal opportunity for us to address lower income, more out. So the ideal opportunity for us to address lower income, more at-risk communities would be to take our programs into those communities. Um, we'd love to bring, and we do in membership, we welcome in membership, but because our programs are full, we can't take any more kids. We opened up the Patrick Park, the, the Rutherford Center two summers ago, and I believe this last summer that we were full in the Rutherford Center. So we couldn't take any more kids in the Rutherford Center this past summer.
Thank you. A lot, I know serving the at-risk community is important to us as a community and, and I know the Y does a wonderful job with your programming and uh, we've been uh, really enjoyed having you as a guest there at Patch Reef with your facility, you're managing that Rutherford Center. Yeah. Yeah. So thank you very much for what you do for the community.
Thank you.
Craig.
Hi, Jason. Thank you very much. That was um, very good. A couple of questions for you. Um, what you presented in the three phases, approximately how much space are you?
I think all in, the activity space is around two hundred thousand square feet of activity space.
And so I think.
So in acreage, I haven't put it to pencil as far as how many acres it is. And all of that is flexible. And listen, if you give us, if you give us fifteen acres, we'll design a YMCA into fifteen acres. If you give us five hundred acres, we'll design a YMCA into five hundred acres. If you give us five acres, we'll design that Y, too.
Okay, so if you didn't have um, pickleball or racket sports as part of this program, and you were gonna design a Y because we needed a Y and the, you demonstrated we need a Y, you know, in east, would this look the same?
If we didn't use?
Or RFP process around the um, racket sports and everything like that, how would you see our community um, go?
So let me answer it this way. Do I think there's a space for the YMCA not based on racket sports? Without question. However, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the country. It's the fastest growing sport in YMCA's. Pickleball alone was successful during COVID and keeping YMCA's got out ahead of it. Pickleball helped them stay financially viable throughout COVID. So, yes. If, if I would have brought a proposal to the Beach and Parks District even just four years ago, I probably wouldn't have led with pickleball. So some of the, not to, not to, some of the other proposals that you have are really based on food and beverage. To make things work for our YMCA, it has to include the membership, health and wellness and programming component. So our funds come from three primary areas. Membership, which is about thirty-eight percent of our revenue. Uh, programs, which is about forty-five percent, and then contributed support, which is the remainder. Contributed support is people that make donations to our YMCA. So four years ago, I wouldn't have led with pickleball, racquetball, racket sports, tennis or paddle. Um, but this RSP requested it, and it's the right thing to do in today's environment. Um, and every YMCA across the country is jumping into it.
And for the need for a fieldhouse gym, I know basketball started at the Y, I think.
So it's not, basketball did start at a YMCA, Springfield, Massachusetts. Um, the need for a fieldhouse gym space really is multi-program necessary. Uh, because we can use it for multiple purposes. We can use it for after-school programming, we can get it licensed. Uh, you can use it for summer camp because you need shade, shelter and bathrooms. But then you can absolutely use it for its primary continued purpose, which is basketball, volleyball, indoor activities such as that. But we can't, um, I can take more kids in our basketball program right now, but we don't have the additional gym time. I can't take more kids in my summer camp or my after-school because I need that shade, shelter and bathrooms. And in most cases, the uh, pavilion that you see that's partially covered, that's not fully enclosed, that's not under air conditioning, that will not count for licensing, which means we can't deliver licensed after-school childcare program. We can certainly, and, and to be honest with you, when you're dealing with children, when one of our really, 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 not even, not even one of the crazy summer storms rolls in, you're not gonna put a hundred kids underneath that and feel good about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so I love the concept and I love all the um, the concepts that you put into it and the different phases. Have you thought about the west side of the property, the southwest side of the property where we had a community center and a pool as a placement? Um, and it's actually going, we're planning on paying it off by two thousand twenty-six, which would be about around the time that you would be done with your fundraising.
Yeah.
So it might be a great opportunity to look at that as well.
I think.
Especially it being two hundred thousand square feet of facility. Um, it might be an opportunity where we could look at that space as well.
Yeah, for, I would ask not to get hung up on the two hundred thousand square feet because there's a lot of flexibility in there. This was our attempt at realizing and meeting the vision for the Beach and Parks District, but also making a facility that would be operationally successful. So I kind of closed, or at least I hope I closed with the idea that you, you've got a tough decision to make. You've got some great proposals. Um, this has been a wonderful process to go through, has been very transparent, and we've certainly enjoyed it. Um, our goal would be to be part of the future for the master plan for Boca Tika. If it's this one, yay, great, we're excited about it. We want to begin working with you as partners. We want to begin working with the community to decide, is this, does this reflect what the community's desires, needs, wishes and so forth is? If not, are we close? How far off are we? But ultimately, just like Rutherford, we want to be partners with Beach and Parks District. And we want to increase our ability to meet community need in our shared community.
Okay. Yes. Thank you very much. Any further questions for Jason? Nope. Okay, thank you very much.
As fun as this is, it's not easy to get up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, you want your zip drive? Jason.
So next up, we have the Robbie Wagner Group. Whoever is presenting would like to come up. To the microphone.
Present from here on the stage.
Right here, this one.
Mr. Sir.
This one.
Good evening. May please this honorable commission, my name is Peter Sacks. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Sacks Sachs Kaplan. And it's my privilege to represent the Robert Wagner Group, uh, currently based in New York. Uh, they have made a fantastic proposal, which I hope you find uh, favorable, to build the first indoor air-conditioned racket sports facility in this area. Uh, before embarking on the proposal, uh, the Wagner Group did a market study. They carefully um, looked at your uh, RFP, tried to be as responsive as possible to the request for a racket, sports racket facility. Uh, they assembled a formidable team to put this together. Uh, it's led by our uh, president, uh, Mr. Robert Wagner, who has a uh, over forty-year background in the sport of tennis, as, as a teacher, as a pro, as an operator, as someone who uh, treats tennis with a passion and wants to uh, transfer that passion to other people who enjoy playing uh, tennis and other racket sports, particularly young people, including uh, the underserved class and the underprivileged. Uh, Mr. Wagner currently operates three successful facilities in the uh, New York area. Uh, the newest one is Southampton. There's one in Westchester and there's one in Glen Cove. They're all successful and they're all uh, producing a lot of uh, enjoyment and exercise for the people who enjoy those facilities. Uh, to to uh, complement. I think anybody can. We're having a technical glitch, that's why I stopped. Apologize. I could do without that.
He expressed his desire and had discussions with Boca Raton City and District officials regarding establishing a racket facility. He considers this RFP as his golden opportunity to establish a racket facility that would serve as a cornerstone for the Boca Raton community encouraging active lifestyles. Introducing our team and partners. Robbie believes in the power of collaboration and gathered a team of like-minded individuals who are leaders in their respective fields. Our team members are dedicated, driven and enthusiastic about bringing their expertise to our projects. These partnerships allow us to expand our capabilities and deliver an enriched experience to our clients. Our shared values and mutual respect fuel these partnerships, enabling us to overcome challenges and achieve success together. Introducing Eric Silver, the Director of Tennis. Eric Silver, the co-founder of OpenCourtBoca.com, is an epitome of dedication and commitment towards uplifting the lives of children from underserved communities in and around Boca Raton. His organization, a five-hundred-one-C-three setup, spearheads an initiative to provide tennis instruction to these children, many of whom are associated with groups like the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the YMCA. A recognized and respected figure in the tennis sphere, Silver has been the Director of Tennis at the Boca Raton Hotel for over two decades. He presides over a sprawling facility featuring eighteen tennis courts and six pickleball courts. Under his leadership, the hotel's tennis program has consistently ranked among the top ten in the United States, offering recreational clinics for youth aged three to sixteen and for adults. Beyond training, the program also encompasses tournaments, clinics and team tennis, ensuring a comprehensive tennis experience for all participants. Introducing Alex Levitsky, world-class architect and principal of Global Sports and Tennis Design Group. Meet Alex Levitsky, a registered architect, facility planner and renowned figure in the world of sports facility design. Since the turn of the millennium, Levitsky's excellence in design and planning has been acknowledged over fifty times by local, state and international authorities and associations. His expertise and relentless pursuit of innovation have been instrumental in sculpting him into a world-class architect. From the American Sports Builders Association, ASBA, honoring him with distinguished service awards to being the recipient of the esteemed RSI Tennis Industry Service Award in January twenty-twenty-one. Alex's accolades are a testament to his commitment and service to the industry. His vision and contributions have consistently set new standards in the field, paving the way for future generations of architects and planners. Introducing Charles Putman, Principal of Putman and Associates, Inc. Through all his illustrious career, Charles Putman, Principal of Putman and Associates, Inc., has consistently spearheaded the development industry for over thirty-five years. His relentless endeavors in obtaining permits for development projects of various scales and sizes across the southeastern and mid-Atlantic regions render him an authority in this field. His unique vantage point garnered from continued exposure to the permitting process not only accrues extensive experience for the company in development planning, but also mandates the necessity for all planners to stay updated with the evolving regulations and procedures that significantly impact the development process. The land planning services offered by Putman and Associates, under the able leadership of Charles Putman, dovetail the latest trends in the industry with the company's rich experience, ensuring solutions that are both innovative and practical. Introducing Peter S. Sacks, Partner of Sacks Sachs Kaplan. Peter S. Sacks, a founding partner of Sacks Sachs Kaplan, is a towering figure in the Boca Raton legal sphere. The firm, the largest locally owned one in the area, stands as a testament to Sacks' commitment to delivering high-quality legal services. With over forty years of experience in the field, Sacks holds an A V rating from Martindale-Hubble, the highest peer review rating attainable, underlining his impeccable standing in the industry. In addition to his legal work, Sacks has devoted a significant part of his life to serving the community. As a past president of J A R C, Florida, he worked tirelessly to empower individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, providing programs and services designed to educate and uplift. This dedication to service did not go unnoticed, earning Sacks a lifetime achievement award from South Florida Business and Wealth in twenty-twenty-two. His accomplishments in both legal services and community work make Peter S. Sacks a truly noteworthy individual, embodying a blend of professional excellence and social responsibility.
Little funny to see somebody bragging about you, but it's kind of nice. Um, we have a great team, as I started to say. Mr. Levitsky is a consultant that works on sports racket facilities and other sports venues. Uh, he's built or designed places in Argentina, China, Puerto Rico, and all over the United States. Uh, Mr. Putnam will step up here in a moment and talk about the design plans because unfortunately, Mr. Levitsky is stuck in an airport in New York. They've been having some problems up there uh, with the weather and his flight was canceled. Uh, the nice thing, though, about having an indoor facility here in our area, uh, there's none between Fort Lauderdale there's none between Fort Lauderdale in here or the Lifetime up in PGA in here. And none have tennis, okay? We're going to have tennis, a new sport called Pedel, and we're going to have pickleball. And we're going to be immune from heat for our participants and from rain. We're not going to have a membership fee. It's going to be open to the public to play for a fee. By having an indoor facility, we're going to protect the residents in that area from noise. As you know, pickleball is one of the noisier sports. We're going to protect them from lighting inconvenience. And we've mitigated and left their grass area untouched. And we're also going to provide for associations in the area that would like to have a meeting place. We're going to make part of our facility available for meetings. As I said, we feel our proposal is the most responsive to your RFP. There's a few other points I'd like to make. But at this point, I do want to comment that Mr. Putnam is quite familiar with the area. He and his team of professionals, surveyors, the engineers, the traffic consultants have already studied this area in detail because they were involved in designing the golf course the district was considering building in that area. So they can get started right away. They don't have any ramp up time. And I think that's a major advantage to the extent that you want to get this place operational and want to start deriving revenues and allowing the public and members of the district to enjoy it. So I'm going to come back in a few minutes, but I do want Mr. Putnam to explain some of the design features to you.
Good evening, my name is Charles Putman. I'm, as you've heard earlier, I'm the land planner for the project. You all may remember me from the fact that my company worked along with you guys on the golf course for so long. So we are familiar with the, with the project. I'm going to review the, in, in place of Alex, who unfortunately is tied up at the airport. I'm going to go through the, you know, the details of his, his plan. But before I do that, we have another video that's going to deal with the details of the project. So if you want.
Analysis reveals an untapped opportunity within Boca Raton's recreational landscape. Despite the abundance of outdoor options, the city's indoor sports facilities remain significantly limited, particularly for racket sports. These findings point towards the demand for an inclusive indoor racket center, unrestricted by weather or membership. Our analysis reveals an untapped opportunity. Our analysis reveals an untapped opportunity within Boca Raton's recreational landscape. Despite the abundance of outdoor options, the city's indoor sports facilities remain significantly limited, particularly for racket sports. These findings point towards the demand for an inclusive indoor racket center, unrestricted by weather or membership exclusivity. The proposed solution is an expansive indoor facility, serving as a complimentary addition to the city's existing recreational offerings. It will feature eight clay tennis courts, nine pickleball courts, and two paddle courts. This setup not only fosters an engaging environment for racket sport enthusiasts, but also encourages new players to explore and enjoy these sports. The Boca Raton Racket Center creates a space where the community can gather, compete, and grow together, regardless of the one hundred forty-one point three annual rainy days or the six monkey months starting from May. Our facility is more than just a venue for sporting activities. It's a social hub, a community landmark, offering an array of food and beverages options for everyone. Juice and snack bars, cafes and lounges are strategically scattered across the area, ensuring that you can enjoy a quick bite or a leisurely drink, whether you're playing or just visiting. We also offer a meeting room for private events. Nonprofit and community organizations can utilize this space for their meetings once a month, making our venue an integral part of the local community. Additionally, we have numerous spectating options for our guests. Seating along the sidelines of courts, elevated seating behind the baselines and lounge areas are included, ensuring that everyone can enjoy the action from different perspectives. Our lounges are exquisitely designed to promote socialization amongst guests. Whether you're watching a game, having a meeting, or simply enjoying a meal, our facility.
Let me. Yeah, here we are. Okay, show, give me the first phase, if you would, please. Let me very quickly then, you, you have an idea of the scope of the, of the, of the project. This is actually the plan for the project and phase one and phase two, if it comes back up. Well, they're going to kick us out of here and and well, they haven't seen the plan yet. So I think it's important that we, we show them that. Can you just get to that or no? No, the, the, the plan, the site plan, please. Well, we just had it up there. I know, all right. Sorry.
I'm going to talk like a millennial now, okay? This is the closest thing to your master plan, the sports racket facility. We've got experienced operators that are not going to build and sell. They're not going to build and leave. They're going to be your partner for the duration and operate it and make it successful. We have space for spectators. We have lounge levels, juice bars, coffee bars. It's going to be a community where the senior people can play pickleball, the young folks can play tennis, and those who know how to play paddle can have a good time playing paddle, which might be the next trendy sport. The building plans are negotiable. We can put a beautiful facade on. It's all a question of, of the price and what you want to spend. The revenue stream mentioned in our proposal is significant and will result in additional stream to help the taxpayers of the district alleviate from paying for everything. We've got Eric Silver, who's already quite active in the underserved community and charities. He will expand his role with the help of this facility. And finally, as Mr. Putnam was trying to explain, the first phase is about a hundred ten thousand square feet. The second phase is seventy thousand square feet. We'd like to see the usage and the market trends before we commit to the second phase. Whatever sport is popular is what we will propose for the second phase. Thank you very much. I apologize for any technical glitches and for going over time.
Thanks, Mr. Sachs. Okay. So we'll open it up to questions from the commissioners. Go ahead.
Peter, and this time I got your name right. I apologize in the past I called you Dave because it's the same name as a guy who used to play second base for the Yankees. So.
That's, that's fine. You can call me Dave anytime.
So I, I have a couple of questions here. You, in your presentation, you show a cost of twenty-five million dollars for the facility. Is that total for both phases or just for the first phase?
No, I believe that's for the first, both phases?
Both phases. Okay. And what do you foresee as your operating costs? In other words, utilities, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera.
Utilities will be very little because we'll have solar. We'll have, we'll have solar. So the utility.
Excuse me, can you give us your name?
Robbie Wagner.
Okay, thank you.
The utilities will be very, very little because we'll be, we'll be using solar. The maintenance, when you say maintenance, explain.
In other words, keep, upkeep of the courts, you know.
Quarter of a million dollars a year.
Two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay. And as far as financing, you have that all?
It's all in place.
It's all.
We have a commitment to fifty million dollars.
Okay, all right. That's, those are all the questions I have.
Bob, go ahead. Or Suzie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. As far as, you know, you said that there would be no membership restrictions. How are you going to do your hourly court fees? Or how are you going to have your revenue stream come in?
You're going to pay to use. There'll be a fee to use by the hour. And we plan to offer priorities to district members. But we will be open to the public. You'll be able to book court time online or in the pro shop. And we see the revenue stream being driven by tennis, quite frankly.
Do you have an idea of how much it would be per hour for the, for court time? For pickleball or for tennis?
Hi, good evening, Eric Silver. How are you? The revenue, like you said, there would be a huge discount for residents of the district. And if somebody wants to come down from Palm Beach, Fort Lauderdale or wherever, that would be considerably more. Obviously, ten o'clock in the morning would be more expensive than six in the morning or seven in the morning or nine at night. We will offer clinics from kids three to five years old, five to ten years old, to sixteen-year-old. We'd like to offer free clinics for the elderly in Boca Raton. My foundation, Open Court, could expand there with the Boys and Girls Club, et cetera. I think that the, I mean, I oversee a very large facility. Last year, three, thirty-six thousand people played tennis and pickleball at the Boca Resort. It was about sixty percent tennis, forty percent pickleball. Tennis represents about ninety-five percent of the revenue. Pickleball continues to grow. Pickleball will be a revenue stream. That's a much different mindset than renting a court for an hour, an hour and a half or two hours. As Peter said, you can go online. If you wanted to play tomorrow morning, you'd be able to go online now and see what's available, book by credit card. No membership. Again, the prime times would obviously be more expensive than.
Was your question answered?
No. Thank you.
The, the revenue, the cost per hour will depend on the time of day. You know, seven to nine at night is going to be more expensive than ten to twelve in the morning. So the revenue will be any, the cost for the courts will anywhere be from thirty-five an hour to seventy-five an hour, depending on.
That answered my question.
Depending on what sport it is. And just add one thing about Pedal and pickleball and tennis. In two thousand and twenty, there were twenty, eighteen hundred and fifty Pedal Courts in the United States. Right, by two thousand and twenty-four, there'll be twenty-three thousand.
Just to clarify real quick, the cost per hour, is that per person or?
No, 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 per hour.
Per person or?
No, per court. Per court.
Per court.
Yes, per court.
Yeah, thank, thank you for clarifying that. I was looking in the, in your proposal to RFP and I didn't understand where it said court rental maximum for tennis at thirty. I assume that's for the court itself and depending upon the time of day, is that? Okay, and I noticed the, the revenue to answer Sue's question, that your projection was three and a half million for court rental during the year. Is that for the first year? Okay. And I'm, I'm not a pickleball player. I'm a prior tennis player, so I have more interest in that. But from a pickleball aspect, I know that one of the terms I hear all the time is open play. Is that something that, I know Eric, you're, you're a tennis.
No, no, I, I own pickleball clubs too. So we will, we will have open play, you know, six days a week. You know, at, at all the clubs, we do that. You know, we want to give everybody a chance to play, to just show up and play and at a very reasonable, very small fee.
Okay. And, and could you expand a little more on the open court? I think we were talking.
Well, there's seasonal court time where people buy a court for thirty-four weeks or the indoor season from September to, you know, to May. There's, there's daily court rentals, this.
I'm sorry, Eric, I was talking about your charity that you, that, that maybe this Eric has, that he has where he takes the underserved community and the vets. So I think that you had mentioned in your proposal, giving them an opportunity to learn the sport or from ground level up. Is that correct?
So you're asking me how to expand that?
Well, you, you mentioned it earlier that, you know, with the underserved community that you're, you know, you have a charity that you're doing that. I just wanted to know a little bit more about it, is about the numbers.
Right, Open, Open Court Boca is a five oh one three C by, I'm one of the founders with other people from other residents of Boca Raton. The Boca Resort has been kind enough to let us use those courts for the kids to come for clinics. In the summer, we actually go to the Boca, to the Boys and Girls Club park over off Dixie Highway over there. So my time is limited, court time is limited at the resort. This would enable us to expand that program to three, four days a week versus one hour a week. We do fundraisers and clinics to let the Impact One Hundred Group raise money, the Junior League of Boca. So, I mean, this would enable us to expand all those charitable, charitable things that we do there throughout the year.
You know, I, I think that's commendable to do because there, you know, occasionally you see somebody on the, you know, the tennis circuit, the professional who started out just in that very same way. And I, I think it's great to, to have the availability to the underserved.
The idea was never to create the next great player. The idea is to give these children a chance to do something that they otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do.
Correct. And did I read in here that also that your facility would, you know, the indoor facility would be hurricane-proof? Is that correct? Could it?
Absolutely.
Could it actually be used as a hurricane shelter? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your proposal and Mr. Sachs for coming out this evening. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I was just, I was about to write. Yeah.
Okay, next. I think. So next up, we have Camp Pickle. Uh, so next up, we have Camp Pickle.
Okay, thanks everybody for uh having us here, um, I thought I would talk for a moment about what we are, um, you know, Camp Pickle is a, of course, we're a pickleball concept, we're entertainment. Um, you know, we have this emphasis on uh scratch kitchen, craft beverage, uh, and social gaming environment. But with respect to our thematic, uh, you know, we are nineteen forty summer camp aesthetic, um, which we think is something that's interesting, um, it has a national park culture to it, um, it does, um, it does reference, uh, we think speak to a younger generation who may think that it is a bit more kitschy, um, and nostalgic for, uh, an older, uh, generation. Uh, the atmosphere is uh for large and small groups, um, for singles, uh, and companions alike. In terms of, you know, what we are, our DNA, uh, this is a, a concept model that I created in twenty-ten, um, I have been doing entertainment since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, so, um, I'm aging myself, but that's on, I think it's almost twenty-eight years of doing these entertainment models. But in twenty-ten, I sort of reinvented the category here when I created something called Punch Bowl Social, um, which we grew to twenty locations nationally, um, and we'll talk a little bit about the team and myself, uh, that helped bring that there. Um, you know, it, it is, uh, again, uh, it is, it's a craveable culinary approach. It's craft beverage and it's social play. The representation of social play in this setting, um, is pickleball. Um, we differentiate ourselves from the rest of everybody else in sort of the pickleball, uh, subcategory of entertainment by also having duck and bowling, private karaoke rooms, darts, all things that, uh, you know, are family oriented and things that uh help for social, uh, gatherings, corporate events. Uh, and, and really before we, we launched, um, our concept Punch Bowl Social in twenty-ten, no one had done that in a way that really focused with a restauranteur's eye and mindset on the scratch kitchen component to it and put it together in a, um, uh, in a design board environment. It, it did become somewhat of a lifestyle brand for in that market at that time for millennials and Gen Z. We think about the experience, um, and so we've done, again, we've grown from Washington DC all the way to Portland, Oregon, um, from San Diego all the way to Miami. Um, so we have a lot of experience doing this. Um, yeah, again, in that twenty, in twenty years, or excuse me, ten years, we have been twenty of our patients. The, you know, how we brought these to life, right, you know, they need capital to fuel them, um, which is of course a question I think that anyone would ask, is how we will capitalize, uh, a venture of this kind. Uh, I've been fortunate over the years to raise two hundred and fifty million dollars of growth capital, um, to bring the ventures that I've created to life. Uh, and we've had a lot of success with capital efforts thus far. So, uh, you know, our experience to understand how to put together sophisticated capital stacks is critical for being able to bring this to life here, um, in your, in your community. The, um, you know, our, our, our team, um, has collectively built four billion dollars of construction projects, and again, we'll talk about their bios in just a moment. But, uh, you know, four hundred and fifty restaurants and hospitality projects, what we did together, uh, with twenty PBS. Um, and, uh, you know, we, of course, are very proud that we earned some editorial acclaim, uh, when we won, uh, twenty nineteen Fast Company Magazine, um, fifty most innovative company in the world, it's a bit silly that we were on a list with Google and Apple. Nevertheless, there were thirty-six editors that were not bright enough to keep us off the list and instead put us on the list. So, um, forevermore, we get to either say that we were great, or we get to say that the editors were not very smart. Uh, there's, you know, another one, this is sort of, it, it's esoteric, but there is a major publication in our industry, Club Nation's um, restaurant news, and we did win breakout brand, um, for Punch Bowl Social, and we also were a hot concept. Many people have won breakout brand, many people have won hot concept. They, they are given at different stages in a brand's life cycle. And, um, we're the only brand ever win both. So oftentimes, a brand will win breakout brand, but they're nascent. They don't have a sophisticated team, they don't know how to grow and nurture the brand, and they never make it to the hot concept stage. We were able to do both. Um, we can skip over this, so Michael, just to save on time. We'll talk a little bit about the team, um, you don't have to look at that uninteresting character for long. Um, but, look, there's a few things, um, in this world that I do fairly well. Um, I'm a pretty good dad, and I'm a very, very good creator and operator of entertainment brands. Um, and that's what this is. Um, we could talk forever about what I don't do well, but, but those things, um, are things I do exceptionally well, and, you know, humbly, I would, I would suggest that I do it better than anyone else in the country, and there's some, um, I think, respected, um, groups that, that may agree with that. Some of the, uh, you know, some of the, um, the timelines as we go through ninety-seven, I created a, a concept called Buffalo Billiards. Ninety-nine, opened another one in Austin, Texas, after that first one in Nashville. Two thousand, opened up at B fifty-two Billiards in Denver, these were all large format, twenty thousand square foot plus venues. Um, uh, in two thousand and three, I divested of those ventures, and then for a decade, I spent time opening up um, independent restaurants, having a lot of fun doing those, but, um, when, you know, you work very hard at those and you don't actually, uh, make as much money, so I figured I would go back into entertainment um, and focus there. Twenty-ten, I created Punch Bowl Social, um, subjective statement, but, um, we did create the modern entertainment model at that time, there's been a lot of knockoff of that model since that time. Um, we don't think that, uh, they've had the success, they haven't had the discipline to focus on the culinary component and the craft beverage consistently. Um, but, uh, but there's a lot of folks that have tried. Twenty-seventeen, I was fortunate enough to win an Ernst and Young Entrepreneur of the Year. Um, again, there's reference to what we've won with patient's restaurant news, breakout brand and, um, uh, and hot concept. Uh, twenty-seventeen, grass plate, uh, private back, uh, private equity group, uh, Catterton invested with us, they put thirty-five million dollars to work to help grow Punch Bowl Social. And, uh, we were fortunate to, um, be able to return to fifty-four percent IRR to them, so we not only put together interesting things, but they are extraordinarily commercially viable. Twenty-nineteen, Fast Company Magazine, I mentioned, uh, and then in twenty-nineteen, um, we brought in Cracker Barrel, which is a publicly traded restaurant group um, that, uh, that bought out Catterton and became my new partner. Um, at that time, they were, uh, they put a hundred and fifty million dollars of fuel on our, in our tank to help us grow. Um, and we were off, uh, and running, we have a little bit of a COVID problem, we're not unique in that, every, all of us experienced that. In twenty-ten, I love Punch Bowl Social, um, and then in twenty-twenty-one, I started developing Jaguar Valera and Camp, uh, Pickle. Today, um, we have raised capital from some marquee investors, um, Good Alpha, who is a, a, a specialist in investing in the vertical of pickleball. They're not just in entertainment with us, they are also, um, uh, up and down different pickleball related investments. Align Ventures and Simon Property Group, Simon Property, of course, is the fifth largest, uh, real estate trust in the world. Um, and the largest mall operator in the United States, and they made an investment into our capital stack, so um, you know, I share these things with you because these are highly respected groups that believe that we have a concept that is sustainable and will be able to move into the future. Some of the team, this is important, um, I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm a very lucky individual. These, this is the core team that helped me grow Punch Bowl Social, every one of them signed back up to do another ten-year run after what we did at Punch Bowl Social, which was very, very hard work. Lee Grim, my COO, Bob Overstreet, Totenroy, there's only two people on that page that weren't with me through the pun, the entire Punch Bowl run, and that's my SVP of Real Estate and my Culinary Director, um, Manny, uh, Barea. But these folks all have the institutional knowledge and the muscle memory to do this with us again. Go to the next, um, Michael Prolia, uh, who is part of Good Alpha, uh, and one of our strategic advisors, um, right now, he's strategically clipping, clipping through these pages. Um, Bill Allen, um, frankly, is the, uh, a mentor of mine, but he's been an investor in my projects. Bill is the best growth restaurant, um, investor, uh, and, and mine in, in the entire category. He's invested personally, he sits on my board, Steve King, for twelve years, was the CEO and Chairman of Dave Investors, which is the gorilla in the room, right, they're the the two to three billion dollar, depending on what day it is, market capitalization, publicly traded entertainment concept, and Steve felt, he's retired now, he felt like what we were doing was the best in the category and decided to join us. From a, uh, from a design standpoint, um, Fam has been with us, they built twenty projects with me, we'll skip by them quickly. Oz Architecture, um, I mentioned them just because of their horsepower, they built eight punch bowls with me. Uh, they built very large, um, hospitality projects up in the mountains, so they understand how to work on these big box, highly scaled, uh, concepts. Um, a strategic advisor, advisor feed, we can pass by that. You know, the project approach, we talked a little bit about craft beverage, um, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse there. You know, our target audience here, though, it does, you know, it speaks to the spectrum, uh, it's a wide spectrum, right? We're gonna get everything from eight-year-olds to forty-year-olds to sixty-year-olds, couples, families, singles. That's why we created this nineteen forties environment, so that everybody would feel, would feel welcome. Corporate events are a big piece of that, we did forty million in corporate events in nineteen, in twenty-nineteen in Punch Bowl Social. We know how to go and find those and bring those to the community, and of course, they flip into tax dollars. Concept statement, you've seen that, we can, you know, these pictures are lovely, they're fun to look at, but I think they're self-evident. Um, I wanna give you guys all the time you need to ask questions, but we have these indoor environments, outdoor environments. Um, every, every granular element, uh, is purposeful, with the way that we try to bring these together. Um, what we want to do here, we've created two different layouts, we could create ten more in collaboration with this body. Um, but, you know, two of them are, are here, I think we've got thirteen courts in, um, in each, eight of them indoors, because apparently it rains here in the afternoons in the summer. And, um, we also have an idea that we can develop a phase two where there are going to be some more community outdoor courts with some cover. And that's a, a, a concept that I think that we can get further, um, into, um, as this board, um, is interesting to continue, um, that discussion. We go to, um, you know, at the end of the day, we will create seventy thousand square feet of socialization, food, beverage, and entertainment uh, product here, uh, in Boca. Uh, our design, um, again, I, I just, I, I feel like we, we haven't seen anyone bring to life what we are, what we're creating with, uh, Camp Pickle in this space, um, and, you know, we hope we do, but standing here today, we, we do not believe that we have. We'll keep skipping past that, Michael, and we'll get to just here, the, these indoor spaces. This is where we can have events, tournaments, this is lifestyle for the locals. This is, you know, this is pickleball, but it's more, it's the bowling and the karaoke and all these things that kids and families can do together, this becomes a gathering place and a treat third home. I, I love to steal that phrase from Howard Schultz, um, the third place, but this truly is a third place, right, where people can come and dwell. Our finishes are classic materials, they're time-tested, we don't need to reinvent our design in five years, these are designs that have been popular for fifty years. This specific project here, I wanna highlight that, um, from a capitalization standpoint, these are very expensive projects to bring to life. Um, our development partner is Inland, uh, and a gentleman in Stephen Peddleson. Inland is a fifty-four billion dollar, um, real estate trust out of Chicago, and they are, um, working with us on all of uh, our, our camp pickles that come out of the ground, so they will, they will come into play, they will bring seventy percent of the total capex uh, to bring this to life, um, and Camp Pickle, um, will bring the balance of, of that. And I think, you know, um, I guess last, uh, you know, this is, um, this is the best product I think we've created, uh, in a twenty-seven year career. Um, and it's, it is the same model that we, that we have, um, that, that we've been operating this entire time, but this is the best package that we've put around the nuts and bolts of already proven concept model. And so, um, we know it works, um, and, uh, subjectively, we feel it's the best product that we've created.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll open it up to questions from the listeners.
Susie, okay. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
You have a very impressive resume.
Thanks.
Uh, with all of your projects that you have, how are you going to focus on this one and, and make us special?
Yeah, so we, we can't be successful unless we develop a relationship in the community here. Right, and that comes from hiring locally and bringing in all the talent that we can from here at a high level, we're training them from, you know, in the way that, um, in the way that we do in our culture, um, from our HQ, but we have to bring that talent in here, again, locally and, um, being able to organize this, that comes from that team that we built joint Punch Bowl Socials together with. You go into Indianapolis, you go into Minneapolis, um, Portland, Oregon, where we had Punch Bowl Socials. The locals were surprised, they had no idea that we had locations out of town, because we feel like a place we're sort of the, the anti-chain chain, right, because I'm an independent restaurateur historically, that's all I know. And that's embedded in our DNA, and hopefully it translates, if I answered your question.
Yes, yes, thank you, um, another question, uh, family of four wants to go play pickleball, have some drinks, have some, have a meal. What kind of, uh, a tab are they going to have by the end of the evening?
Yeah, so, um, obviously, it's gonna depend where, you know, it's à la carte, right, you can, you could just go in and play, or you can go and eat. And that's kind of the beauty of, of entertainment, um, it does have, again, this dwell time component to it, where people, uh, tend to, um, they, they tend to linger as they're having a good time. Um, so from a, what, what we refer to as PPA, per person average, um, on the culinary side, uh, and the, the food and the drink, you're not gonna see anything, um, you're not gonna price out above what you would expect at a normal casual dining experience here in Boca, right? It depends how long you play pickleball, the pickleball rates will be market, you know, they're, they're not gonna exceed thirty bucks an hour during, you know, during prime time. Um, and if you split that four ways, it's, um, you know, it's, it's manageable, so in the aggregate, um, I, I don't, I think standing on stage, I can do math that well, but, um, but all of these elements together, I think are market and, and, and approachable, and if they're not, I can't be successful, right, I need a family of four to be able to come in once a week.
Thank you.
Hey, Bob.
And as Susie said, thank you for your presentation this evening. The phase one, that will include the eight indoor pickleball courts. And you have the flamingo and the gator, and, and can you change the name of the gator to the Seminoles?
I, I, I half felt like I was gonna hear that question. Um, and so, um, it, I guess it depends how close we are to getting the, uh.
Yeah, I, I, and I was, yeah.
The, um, um, yeah, so it's, it's eight, it's eight indoor, it's three covered, and then, um, two completely outdoor uncovered, right, so it's thirteen total.
Yeah. Yeah, what, what do you have, um, you know, I, I, if I wanted to, if I'm a tennis player and I wanted to take up pickleball, will you have somebody there uh, that'll help with instruction, or do you have to know? Uh, and I, I know the other term I hear a lot from my pickleball friends are open play, where you just go put your racket in the fence and wait for. And I I know the other term I hear a lot from my pickleball friends are open play where you just go put your racket in the fence and wait for somebody. Is that something that that, you know, a group could do if they wanted to do that, you know, and rent a court for, oh, let's say for an hour, maybe two hours?
Yeah, I think that, so if you're asking, well, we'll take reservations or were you asking if we'll have non reservation courts?
E- either, either or.
Yeah, so the the majority of them, I think, will be reservation and we will always hold some courts for people that just walk in. So that you know that you can sometimes just walk in and get and and get a court. I think that's funner because there's so much to do at a camp pickle, you could come and wait and have a good time and then get on, get on your court. And so, but there will be an online, you know, technology that, you know, that we'll use for some of for the reservations.
Yeah, I I I noticed that in the breakout that you had on the pro forma that. The food and beverage was a big component to the revenue source and the activities. Or generally would be pickleball and those activities. It looks like it runs one to two million in revenue from those, whereas food and beverage is a majority of that. For you. You 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 mentioned collaboration with the district, what did you have something in mind with that or? As far as a financial or?
So in in terms of 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 how we do our 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 revenue ratios. We get there because of our, again, our our laser focus on. Really acting like a restaurant that has all of these social activations going on down there, right? And having big social spaces where people can gather. If you're a group of eighteen on a Friday night and you decide you want to go out together and need a drink. Not a lot of restaurants, so you can just walk right in, try to do that, you can do that because of our size. Our culinary director is a very special individual, James Beard Award winning guy, he's competing in a competition right now that I'm not allowed. To say publicly, so when when I can say that, it's going to be really neat. And so that's why that food and beverage ratio is so high, we focus on it. In terms of the collaboration, I think that for phase two. You know, if we wanted to, if that is what in in the discussion, the collaboration is that we think there needs to be more courts, right? That are maybe even priced differently, right? There are sort of these outdoor courts that are available to locals, right? That, you know, folks that are from Boca Raton or have a residence here, even if it's part time. I think that would be something we would ask to figure out financially how we can collaborate together, because it's not going to be, you know, it could be a multimillion dollar project. But will not have the same dollar for dollar return to us, but we're willing to develop and coordinate it. Put money into it, we just, I think we would just need some help.
Understood, thank you for your answer. I'm good.
Okay. Craig, Steve.
Thanks for coming down. It's an interesting concept. Few questions. Your phase one projected opening, let's just say. We got started. December of this year. So we're looking at January twenty twenty six opening, is that?
Yeah, depending on how quick we can get through. Permit face with with the with the municipality, there's sort of a, there's a six month variable in that opening timeframe, whether it's. Four months or twelve months in some in some municipalities.
There's a question as to whether or not. We need a variance to serve alcohol at our parks. If the city says. No, what's your plan being?
I think that we would try to work with the city to find a, to, for the city to think it's a great idea to say yes. And we would work, you know, with with, you know, we we've worked in districts before where there's a head scratcher, right? Whether they want that to come to life or not. And by the time they understand the way our operation works, especially the way that we have a family orientation here. We've never had anybody determine a no, but our, my response to you is that. We would sit down with you and 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 work in earnest to 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 try to solve that, we want to hear what your issues are.
Okay, also, I I took a look at the menu that included in the proposal. And I gained five pounds just looking at it, but that's another.
That's why you play pickleball.
Well. I I like watching other people play pickleball, that's my exercise. But is this a template that you use nationally or are there regional variations?
Yeah, when we, one of the ways that we can operate efficiently as a growth brand is that you come up with with a a a menu that really services a lot of, you know, demographic sets. And you you need to be able to execute. About ninety percent consistency across a system, otherwise it's harder to. Put out a consistent product that makes the guest happy all the time, so. So it is, it is something that we would develop and and run away, but it is all scratched and it is. Very focused on, again, smoked proteins, I don't, I'm not saying barbecue, I'm saying smoked proteins, Mexican and southern.
Okay. And. And in so far as racket sports, what kind of staff do you envision that works? How many instructors? Assistants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to to make the entertainment fa- facet of this go.
Yeah, so we're, you know, it's better for our business if more people, you know, start to become better pickleball and play a lot, so we'll, you know, we'll step up as much as as much as we can.
And finally. You mentioned a phase two. What do you envision as the cost for that? Because I also noted. You would, you would be looking for. Public participation, which I guess means us. But what kind of book? Costs are you looking for construction, et cetera?
Yeah, I I don't have that, I I don't have the development budget for that, but what I can say is the price per square foot is significantly lower than it is when we're building. You know, a pre engineered steel frame structure, right? That's that with that has conditioned air and and all these other things to it, so. I I don't want to, don't hold me to it, but it feels like it's a, you know, it's a fifty percent lower cost per square foot to get there.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, did you have any questions?
You know, I think we've seen several different proposals and this one is really themed on the restaurant part of it. Would you consider partnering with others?
In partnering with. Other other restaurants?
Well, no, not another restaurant, you being the restaurateur. And if we put something together, we see all these different proposals. I've seen three different proposals, very different, you're focused on the restaurant, others are focused on other things. Is there a possibility, would you consider partnership with others?
Well, I, so candidly partnering with another pickleball operator would be difficult, because we, you know, we've been, we've been doing. Food, beverage and and, you know, and entertainment. And I put pickleball in in the entertainment category, it's a quasi sport, but but it's a, but it's entertainment all day. So so we know how to operate that, especially in concert. With F and B programming and how to set private parties, it's a, it's a matrix. That is, that that is a a machine that that it it doesn't, it doesn't adjust very well if you throw a stick in it. There are other things that we think would be fascinating to partner on. There are, you know. I'm making this up, but like, what if the YMCA wanted to, you know, to get involved with us on the other end of what you suggested, right? Like, so we think it'd be neat to, you know, get involved with 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 what they're doing. Invite them into part of our conversation, we have playgrounds for children. Okay, well, maybe we can start, I'm making this up, they haven't said we can do this. I just like the YMCA, so I think they'd be a really neat collaboration partner. So. Thank you.
So this would be the first camp pickle.
The first camp pickle opened in Denver. No, it'll it'll open next year.
Okay.
And so the, but this is the same concept model again that we've been doing for. Since, well, I've been doing this since ninety seven, but but we really dialed in the concept model in twenty ten. When I created Punch Bowl Social in our mind, because it's the same model, the same team. It's the it's the same subcategory. This is our twenty first location. All right, there's, there's, there's nothing different about what we do, other than we have a different aesthetic, we have a different skin on it, a different trade name. And we've added in pickleball as opposed to the other social activations.
Okay. Okay. So the punch ball social doesn't have the nineteen forties theme to it.
That's right, no, Punch Bowl Social is is different, it's more urban, it's more focused on millennials. It has a higher beverage ratio, this is a more family oriented brand, which, you know, I'm standing here today fifty two. I'm a little tired of selling alcohol to, you know, to twenty five year old kids, so so we're we're really excited to do this.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Nope. No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everybody, good evening to the board, good evening to the audience. My name is Stuart Davis and I'm here with my partner Mitch Robbins and we're representing Boca Paddle. So at Boca Paddle, our model is we take play seriously. And we really believe that our community connects through pickleball. It's a sport that's for everybody, it's easy to start playing and it's impossible to stop, people just get addicted to it. And we really want Boca Paddle to be the home for our community, for our country's fastest growing sport. And that's what we really are looking to build here, and that's what we believe we put a proposal together for. So some of our advantages at Boca Paddle, we're extremely well capitalized, I'll get into that a little bit more later. We're completely comprised of local residents and local business professionals. We have experienced managers of athletic facilities, including Boca Ice and City Pickle, which has multiple facilities, New York City, Brooklyn, Philadelphia. Our facility is designed to minimize the impact to Boca Tika and the surrounding neighborhoods. And in that regard, we focus on having less traffic, minimal outdoor noise, we have noise prevention walls around our facility. And our only real opening is on the backside on the east facing towards a railroad track, so really dampening sound towards the Boca Tika. Area, and we also have reasonable hours of operation in terms of when we'll close at night, when we'll be open in the morning. Our facility is designed to meet the needs of the citizens of Boca Raton. We're also designed to be and serve as a public shelter if needed during a hurricane. And we are the only facility proposing to, that's designed for serious pickle and padel users that can host tournaments and corporate events alike. We are also designed to incorporate cultural aspects like art walls and art walks, and there we'd like to be able to showcase local artists from FAU, from Boca High Schools and from Boca Middle Schools. Our partnership has a hundred percent of the capital raised in order to build out the facility that we need, allowing us to get started quite quickly. We'll also have public gardens and parking for walking trails that we plan to build in our facility that you'll see in some of our designs. So it will be open, affordable, community gathering place that blends both recreational facilities along with cultural amenities for the community. Boca is in dire need of a indoor climate controlled professional racket sports facility. So people can be able to escape our unpredictable weather that we experience at different times throughout the year. Whether it's rain or stifling heat, we offer a a space to get away from that. Boca already has a sufficient number of both outdoor entertainment venues and gyms, so we're proposing proposing something that is a lot more focused on indoor and covered. There's plenty of unused or underutilized tennis courts throughout Boca Raton right now, we're focused a lot more on pickleball and padel. And we believe because of that, we fill an unmet need for what the Boca residents are looking for in the case of our facility. So a little bit on our project design and just some pictures. So we're looking at building, a building that has a modern and sleek design, it's a very modern facade, you can see some of the art installations there and some of the walking paths and walking trails that I spoke to and we'll share a little bit more. This is on the backside, we'll have some outdoor pickle and outdoor padel along with garden areas and beautiful landscaping and walking trails. Just more on showing walking trails, the landscape, art installation, sculptures, things of that nature, we want to really make this just a beautiful place that people really want to gather at and really want to hang out at and be at. More outdoor facilities, more walking paths, walking trails, bike paths and all of that. Just showing from a satellite view here, so our facility sits on the on the south side of the Clintmore Road Extension. We're just west of the railroad tracks and we're to the east of the Boca Tika facility. And as you can see, we have a nice buffer landscape space between the Boca Tika complex and even where our parking starts. And landscaping as well, so that creates even more of a buffer. Then we have our building, our indoor building, which I'll speak to in more detail. And then we have our outdoor facility, which is behind the building, has noise dampening, is well landscaped, and as I mentioned, only has, you know, noise towards the the railroad tracks. We do also have the ability, it's not shown here, but on the south, southern part of our facility, we can expand if we need more pickleball, more padel courts, we can expand there with open courts. But we also look at expanding to covered courts, most likely with a metal type awning, the way they've done up in other facilities such as Pictona. In terms of just a more detailed look at at what our indoor and outdoor facility looks like, the indoor building is approximately sixty thousand square feet. It houses fourteen indoor pickleball courts and two indoor padel courts. It also houses a children's play area, men's and women's restrooms and locker rooms, a pro shop, an indoor sports bar, an indoor lounge, as well as a community room. Out in the back, we have a large covered patio area, and then we have eight more outdoor pickleball courts as well as two more outdoor padel courts. These are just some sort of views of what we feel the vibe was will be like around our facility in terms of, you know, the fit and feel and what we're looking to build here, this would be the covered patio in the back. These are just some pictures of other facilities around the country that we like the way they have the their fit and feel and vibe, and we're going to look to follow in the footsteps of some of those and what we plan to do inside and how it feels. And this is just on the backside, you can see there'll still be a buffer between where we are and between where the bright line tracks are. So just some other general project information. So again, I mentioned the size of our indoor facility is just under sixty thousand square feet, the entire facility right now takes up approximately seven acres of land. And as I mentioned, fourteen indoor pickle, eight outdoor pickle, two indoor padel and two outdoor padel. And then the other features that we have, as I mentioned, indoor food and beverage, a second level viewing area, locker rooms and more. We project the total cost of our project to be just shy of fifteen million dollars, there's more breakdown and detail of that in our proposal. As I mentioned, we're doing this with all cash and no debt, we have the cash secured in the bank and we're ready to go with this project. What we're looking for as a commitment from the district would be a forty nine year concession agreement for the land to to build this. The ownership of this is Boca Paddle LLC, which is made up of of our partnership. And we all have extensive business experience, including managing hospitality and food and beverage facilities as well as recreational facilities. All of the maintenance will be the responsibility of us at Boca Paddle, we don't need any contributions from the district or the city in order to maintain our facility. In terms of future discussions of possible ownership transfer, we're open to any of that and other discussions of financial benefits to the city, we're completely open to that as well. Just a little bit more background on the team and who we are, so our team is comprised of of all Boca residents. Experienced and respected, you know, in our in our fields and in our community. And what we're trying to bring here is an incredible vibrant and affordable facility that is a destination that people want to hang out, hang out at, play pickleball and just come enjoy the facility. So our team is made up of Brian Levine, he's the former CEO of Major League Pickleball, just recently stepped down, he's a nationally ranked senior pro pickleball player and was a twenty five year partner at Goldman Sachs. Myself, I'm a medical doctor by background, however, I've spent my life as a serial entrepreneur in the medical device space. I'm a pro level certified pickleball instructor and a pro level tournament player. As I mentioned, Mitch Robbins is here with me as well, Mitch is well known around town, he owns the Wyndham Hotel and Farmer's Table in Red Pine. He's done many other residential and commercial developments throughout Boca Raton. We also have our other partners, Malcolm Butters, a well known developer throughout Boca, who's built, you know, many other residential and commercial facilities. His wife Catherine, who is also resident of Boca and involved in many philanthropic causes and was going to help with our, the cultural aspect here. As I mentioned, we have a lot of operating experience that is similar to this, this, the team was intimately involved and is still involved with the Boca Ice Facility. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Boca Ice Facility, this is actually South. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Boca Ice Facility, this is actually South Palm Beach County's only ice arena. And there we built out a 60,000 square foot facility. This facility has two sheets of ice. It's been doing extremely well. Every month we have thousands of visitors that are coming to our facility. We're hosting tournaments, we're hosting charitable events. And this project was also done completely with private equity, no subsidies from the local or state or county agencies. In terms of managing the facility, we've been partnering with City Pickle. For those of you who don't know City Pickle, they have an extensive team that has been focused on operating and running pickleball facilities. Their most prominent one here, this is picture here, this is in Central Park in New York City at the Woolman Rink, where they run that facility. They're also have expanded into Brooklyn and to Philadelphia and are continuing to expand. And City Pickle and Boca Paddle, you know, we share the same vision. We're really committed to improving lives through the game of pickleball, really helping our community, underserved populations and things in that regard. It's really the vision for both City Pickle and Boca Paddle. In terms of our marketing plan, what we're really trying to build here is a world-class facility for pickleball and padel. We're going to prioritize usage for it with Boca residents. We plan to be offering leagues and clinics, community outreach for local youth and teens. We also have the ability because of the size and scale of our facility to host tournaments, both local and national. And that's very important because there's a massive revenue opportunity for the city. If you look at just on the other side of the state, the US Open for pickleball, which is hosted every year in Naples, Florida. That event brings in eight to nine million dollars every year and it's only growing and getting higher and higher. Because of the size and scale of our facility and the way we have the ability to expand it, we have the opportunity to also host events of that scale. We also want to look to do charity events there. We can host corporate events. Woolman Rink, the facility in Central Park, has been very, very successful doing both charity events and corporate events there. We're also interested in having diversity programs and summer youth programs at our facility. And finally, as I mentioned, the whole partnership is local, Boca Raton residents, you are in the community, we partake in the community. We know what the community wants. And then on top of that, we are using all of our subcontractors, our architecture firm, our legal firm, our interior design firm, our civil engineering firm. We're using all Boca, all Boca firms. I thank you very much for your attention and Mitch and I together are happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Steve, go ahead.
Thank you for presenting. It was very well done. First question is, what kind of timeline do you project from, let's say we decide to go ahead with you guys? And we've reached an agreement and let's just say that's December of this year.
Okay.
What kind of timeline to open it?
We can be open and ready in 12 months.
12 months. So we're looking at the, would be the end of next year.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And you answered a lot of my questions before I even had a chance to ask them.
That's good.
As far as City Pickle, would any of those people be coming down here to manage this facility?
Yeah. So the idea would be that one of their team members would, would, would move down here and manage this facility onsite.
Okay. And I noticed that you had an August 23 opening for the Central Park. City Pickle is, I'm just looking at the proposal. Is that facility now open?
Yeah, it actually opened earlier. So it's been open now for, I think about six months, actually. And it's been well received by the New York residents. It's well used. They, like I said, they, every Monday and Tuesday night, they have corporate events there. They're booked out for the next four months for corporate events, basically right into as soon as it gets cold in New York City.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Sure. Would you consider other partnerships? And it's a two-part question is that great facility and everything, a lot of good history, local people who understand the time it takes to work with our community to get things done. But one of those other things is it's a very big parcel and you take in a very small part of it, I think. And given Mr. Robbins' experience in the hotel industry, there were the former hotels on that site. Would you consider a broader plan for that whole section?
So, so absolutely. So we didn't want to come for, we, we, we actually have some of those broader plans and we've actually already scaled some of that stuff out. That could include some multifamily residential, could include a hotel, could include other, other use for the land. We didn't want to bring that forth as our first presentation here for this, knowing that the RFP was mostly focused around wanting a racket sports facility. But 100% we're open to that. Myself, Mitch, Malcolm, I mean, that, Brian, I mean, that's part of our vision. We would love to be able to do that. And if that's what the city wants, if that's what the Parks Department wants, we can bring forth more details on that and share all of that with you.
Susie.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Would you be willing to, since the city may be closing those courts downtown, would you be willing to add tennis to your, your plan?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, we're open to that. We, we believe that the real need for the city was, was pickle. But if, if we, if the city wants, or the Parks Department believes that we should have some tennis courts on the site, obviously, as you said, we're not taking up the whole plot of land. So on the south side of the facility, we could easily add tennis courts if that's what, you know, if that was in the, in the cards. I mean, that's not something that's overly, you know, expensive to add in relation to our indoor facility that we're building. And maintenance is not overly expensive to do that as well. So we'd be open to that as well.
As far as, I know that the district would be contributing the land, would your organization be open to a percentage of the profits going back to the district? So that we could do other things for the, the community and the taxpayers?
Yep, absolutely. And we spoke to that a little bit in our proposal as well. So absolutely. Yep.
I just wanted to add one thought to that. You know, fortunately enough, all four of us come from very successful businesses. And, you know, paramount to us is being part of the city and doing things that are great for the city and being proud of where the, where the city has gone and where it's become. That was kind of the main focus of the ice skating rink. The ice skating rink, most people, when they thought about it, they said, how can an ice skating rink really work in Boca? But we felt that in, in speaking to the city and speaking to a lot of people, we felt a lot of pride just to try to bring that facility together. Facility that was brought together in 12 to 14 months. So many of the things that we're involved with, being so vested to the community, that's what's paramount to us. All of us have our businesses, that's our foundation. It's more the pride that we bring something great to the city of Boca. We continue to see the city of Boca flourish.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening. My colleagues have beat me to my questions, but you did a nice presentation. I thought Craig's question was, had a lot of foresight in that because we've talked about other options for the property too. And I, I think, you know, Craig may be on to something there that might be viable for the community. But with the, the pickleball, I'm, you know, it's a, an exciting sport that's growing so quickly that we used to be told that lacrosse was a faster growing sport in this country, but I think that you've outpaced that by a long, long standard. At the same token, the question was mentioned about tennis and, you know, you can easily convert tennis courts into pickleball if you had to. But I, I would think, you know, it would be interesting to know that we could have some tennis courts there eventually at some point. Phase two, you mentioned, would that be an indoor or outdoor facility if you were thinking?
So as phase two, we were, we were believing on the south side, we'd want to do a covered facility, you know, similar to what they're proposing are going to do at Patch Reef Park and what they've done at Pictona and some of these other facilities. So basically eight or 16 courts under a large metal, you know, metal awning where you have open air to the sides and whatnot.
Yeah, that, that would have some wind resistance to it, I would hope, wouldn't it? Yep. I asked that question because there's condominiums just to the west of the place. It wouldn't want anything blowing in there. So but thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you guys for having me. Appreciate it.
Missing one there?
Yes.
You can't go four hours straight with all this fun? Try to be time sensitive here a little bit. So I'll take a look. Ready? I'll, I'll grab it. I'll come over to it. They're just letting me talk for a minute. Hi, I'm David Johnson. I'm the founder of Chicken and Pickle. And I'm excited to be here because we have lightning in the bottle. And you guys have heard a lot of dreams tonight. We're living the dream. We have eight of the things we're showing you going to the United States. If you haven't ever been to Chicken and Pickle, go. Every time I send somebody to Chicken and Pickle, a mayor, city councils, whatever, they all come back and go, we want you. We're the industry leader. We're the first mover. We're the Topgolf of pickleball. We're a cheaper, better Topgolf. We will exceed Topgolf's numbers in the next five years. That's our goal. We're going to roll this out across the country. We're family friendly. We're whatever community wants. And I brought two people here tonight to show you the details of it, but we think we have something to share with you. What is Chicken and Pickle? Today it's eight stores open in the United States. We have seven more on the drawing board. We'll open in St. Louis pretty quickly in Houston. We're a casual chef-driven restaurant. Our food's outstanding. Our food's not chef-y, foo-foo, et cetera. It's stuff that you want to eat every day. People come to our restaurants two, three times a week. With most of the communities, we're the cheers of the community. You come to, most people go to Topgolf once every 18 months. People come to Chicken and Pickle two or three times a month. We have a ton of things besides pickleball. We go through Connect Four, Battleship, all those games that you see up there, we have everywhere. We think one of our magic that we have everywhere is the rooftop bar overlooking that. Cornhole's a huge part of this. It's a place that families come and talk and get together. Each venue offers indoor and outdoor space. Our proposal here has indoor air-conditioned courts and three outdoor covered courts. You think they should all be covered? We have a lot of history. We've been doing this for seven years as opposed to other brands, et cetera, from the past. We're here today operating this and we put together a great team. Our mission is family and friends. We foster that at each of them. We have, we have do all kinds of things to that that we're doing, not talking about. Good food, good friends, great fun. Our vision is to become the leading pickleball destination in the United States for family and friends, to do it with communities who love having us. We close, we don't want to be open at three in the morning selling shots. I don't know what you even know what your hours are. This is family friendly. We'll be a leader in local charities and community activities you're going to hear about. So with that, I'd like to introduce two people. First, Garrett Stutz, all seven foot of them, is our director of real estate. He's been working with me for the last two or three years after we quit playing professional basketball. He's doing a great job for us and getting us deals all over the country. He can tell you a little bit about that. And behind him, that will talk after that is Kelly Aldrich, who started as a part-time civic person with me five years ago. And has risen up and become the president of Chicken and Pickle. Recently won a top award, Women Who Mean Business in Kansas City. So without further ado, meet these two fine people.
Well, thank you guys so much for having us here and giving us and all the other applicants the opportunity to bring something special to your S's community. What I want to talk about first is just part of what we want to eventually end up building here. So with seven years of experience and eight open locations, you learn a lot of things. We know that this is a proven concept that works. All of our locations are profitable as of today. This location right here, or this, this design is six indoor climate controlled courts. And that's this top building. It's a little tough to see with the white on white background, but you have six indoor courts here and then two outdoor covered courts. We just now found out you guys actually have enough room for a third outdoor covered court with the dimensions of, of the buildable area. You can see our rooftop there. That is a absolute key part of our design process. That is the most rented spot we have in our entire facility. We host so many different things there. It's a, it's a very special space and we're designing it so it will be just tall enough above the palm trees here that you'll be able to look out and see almost all of Boca all the way to the water. So that's something that's very magical, especially with your S's weather. That's something that we, is very profitable and very special as part of our design. This is what you're going to see as you drive up. We intentionally designed it this way. So as you pull up, you see nothing but activation. You see the outdoor covered pickleball courts. You see our yard area. You see kids running around, families enjoying life, having fun. And you can also see that same rooftop that I just mentioned. This area we call the yard. It's a turfed over area that has all your outdoor games or bags, cornhole washers, has fire pits with Adirondack chairs, lifetime's battleship, a number of different things. We really designed this area so that it is inclusive for all and accessible to anybody. We have the picnic tables that we see time and time again, families or youth sports teams sitting at the picnic tables, the Adirondack chairs, while the kids are running around having fun. And it's just, it, this can be adapted to almost anything. In Oklahoma, we had one group that wanted to rent this out and bring in a bunch of hay and mechanical bowls and have a giant square dancing hoedown. We're able to accommodate that. Now I put this slide in there because this is very important. While we do have a very big facility and it is a massive structure, it is not an eyesore. It will blend in flawlessly with the, the rest of the great architecture here around Boca. It is not so big that it's obnoxious. And again, that rooftop is going to peek out just above the palm trees. Now, I said, that's, that's only part of what we want to build because that is where our, we know is a proven design and that's where our company is headed. That is just this strip of what we want to build. And that sits on a little over one acre. Now, all these additional courts that we designed for this, this is, talking with your residents, it sounds like you guys wanted a pickleball heavy facility. But really, all that additional land, we can cater to whatever your citizens want, whatever the, the beaches and parks department wants to see. Now, again, this is pickleball heavy, but if you guys want padel, if you guys want dog park, which we do have multiple users ready to go and they all are very interested in partnering with us here. Some of those, to name drop, a few of them are Bark Social, our Barque, our Skip Town. We've had conversations with all of them about this site specifically. Another thing is we also are, all of our outdoor space is dog friendly. So while we are dog friendly, we would still love to see a dog park user next to us. We also have playgrounds in a few of our locations. That's something we would love to have here. And again, we would design it so it is inclusive for, for everybody. We have a very real budget because we've built these. We actually know what they cost. That design I just showed you is going to cost us $23 million. It's a very substantial investment that we are willing to make into, into Boca because we believe in this community. We believe in this location. Revenue breakdown, we would be doing at least 13 million here. That's also why it's so attractive to us. That's also why it's so attractive to us. Pickleball is our heart and soul. We do make some money off of it, but we are also very heavy into food and beverage because our food is very good. And because people like to get out, be active, enjoy life, we do have the alcohol component to our business. I know there was some questions about that earlier, so we would need a variance to be able to serve the alcohol here. Twenty to 25% of our sales are corporate events, are birthday parties, are events of all different types. We will be open to sharing revenue and part of that is based on what our final design would be. Those other components, the padel, the children's playground, based on what we want our final design to look like, that, that revenue share could be altered one way or another to reach an agreement that everybody wins. Okay, you guys, from our understanding, you guys are building 18 courts and it's going to be a membership-based model. That is not what we're after. We want to be different. All of our locations are non-membership. Again, they're welcoming to everybody. Our courts are leased to the public two weeks out. You can, online reservation system, you can also walk, we do hold back some courts so you can walk up and try to get a, a pickleball court day up. And while we don't want to be membership-based, we want to be relationship-based. We want to be able to, to have those relationships with each and every citizen in Boca. And then we also want to have partnerships with all the businesses, with all the charities, with all the, the great organizations around here. And to tell you more about all those partnerships is Kelly Aldridge.
Hello, I'm Kelly Aldridge, president at Chicken and Pickle. Humbling to be here, so thank you. Fun fact, I started as a customer. So I fell in love with the concept. I never viewed Chicken and Pickle as just a restaurant. I never viewed it as just a pickleball place. I really viewed it as a community center. We are making waves in the entertainment industry. I feel like we've become a staple, but our heart and soul is all based on community. Our food and drink is fabulous. I feel like all of us have mentioned it. It's chef-driven. It's locally sourced. It's clean. I do like to say we have two frozen things on the menu, our tater tots, which are really good, and our fried pickles, just because we were spending hours and hours of labor on it. I am very biased. The chicken is a top seller, but we do have a full menu. So you, you really can't go wrong. Our best-selling sandwich is our N K C Chicken Sandwich. A lot of our menu stays consistent, but we have about 20%, that's local flair, that will range from location to location. Events, each location has a local events team. We feel like that's very important. Each location also has a full-time community impact coordinator. Their job is to wake up every day, connect with the community and make the community better. We do that through donating space, donating time, hosting fundraisers, driving meals. Having that full-time community impact person, I think, has moved our company forward. And we love to connect really with everyone. That's what's unique about Chicken and Pickle. All are welcome. When we get a charity request for a donation, we respond to everyone within 24 hours. We say yes in some form, might not be what you asked for, but we're going to find a way to support you. We believe very heavily in saying yes to everyone. Boy Scouts churches, schools, Boys and Girls Club. We also know not everyone can afford to come to Chicken and Pickle. We will get out in the communities. We'd love to go to inner cities. We'd love to go to small towns. We'll bring pickleball to you. It's one of our favorite things. This is a quick example. We do have seasonal pop-up bars. We just closed our Tiki Shack last weekend. This is one of our favorites. We do it every holiday. We love to open the week before Thanksgiving. That's when we allow our charitable groups to come in and fundraise, open to the public the week of Thanksgiving, and it's just a really special experience. But we transform our rooftops at all our locations to a ski lodge. Local community impact. Really, this is what gets, gets me up out of bed every day, all fired up and has kept me moving for over five years. Each store generates over 650,000 visitors annually. We will create 200-plus jobs within the local community. We love to host pickleball tournaments. We always get a big draw. We also love to go outside our four walls and connect with the pickleball community. That's very important to us. We sponsor 17 pickleball professionals ages 17 to 62. We sponsor 148. We call them our Chicken and Pickle ambassadors. These are amateurs. These are our heart and soul. They are local to our communities, so your, your residents could apply to be an ambassador. And we love to sponsor them. We have connected with college athletes. We call it our Campus Crew Program. They have a cool card, their name, they get half off food and they use it. They get half off courts, but really our goal is to build a relationship with them, have them attend and volunteer at our community events, and really make them better humans as they are at that local college. Each store is hosted, I mean, over 1,000 events each year. They really do range, birthday parties, oh my gosh, celebration of life. We host all the time, receptions, birthday parties, you name it. We love to have ya. This is a quick recap of 2022 when we had six stores. We have eight stores operating. As a company, we partnered with over 2,000 local civic and charitable groups, donated out over $300,000 worth of donations and stuff we do behind the scenes, right? Like I said, those community impact coordinators, every day they're doing something. We don't post about that. No one knows about it. It's Christmas gifts, it's meals, essentials, financial. We do our part. In 2020, we did create a true 501(c)(3), the Chicken and Pickle Foundation, just to continue our giving, both internal employees and external.
We're near the 15 minutes. As you could see, we could go on and on, but I'd like to bring it to a head. We have the experience. We've been doing this for six years. We survived during COVID. One of our competitors, company you heard a lot, a lot about tonight, went bankrupt during COVID. We paid every employee. We paid every contractor. We, we went strewn there. We're a very strong company. We have the 23 million in cash ready to go. We don't need commitments. We're not raising money. We have $100 million revenue stream. So we're ready to go. We have the experience. We bring a passion to this. We're civic and community. It'll be something you'll be very proud of if you partner with us. We want to be open to you. This is our idea with our base plan to use all of it. We just stayed within the six acres. We'd love to do stuff with the Y, with anybody. We will be long-term community members. We're keeping this. We're a long-term company. We think we could be the best partner for you guys. We're not from Boca, but we have internet, we have experience all over the country. And I think you'll find us to be special people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll open up to questions. Go ahead. Who wants to go first? Bob?
I'm ready yet.
We're getting ready. Steve.
Thank you for coming down. Very thoughtful and well-put-together presentation. Assuming by the end of this year, we got together with you guys and we decided to go ahead. What's your timeline for opening?
We'll move as fast as you guys can move. You, you do have to work with the city, getting through the permit process. We've got this down to do our prototype, about 10 months. We have two general contractors. We've done eight deals with. We have four more going on now. We know what we're doing. We'll be open before anybody else you saw here.
Okay. And insofar as racket sports staff, instructors, et cetera, what do you envision a facility like this?
Yeah, each of our locations has a pickleball manager. We staff our pickleball courts, average 10. We call them our pickleballers, serving guests, teaching those beginner lessons. We are also open to outside pros. You know, if they want to come in, they can rent a court and teach. We have no problem with that. We encourage it. So we love to have local pros also teach. But our locate, you know, our whole model is about 200 employees, but pickleball, it's about 10 dedicated to run our pickleball courts.
Always one person in there. You can always get a lesson. There's always one pickleball. It's never unmanned. We do have some open play, formats, leagues, all that, but we always have somebody there.
And as far as rate structure, you envision discounts for residents as opposed to non-residents and are you going to set your rates according to popularity of certain hours?
We, we have some experience in this. We're $20 on prime, $40 prime. Can't do it for 30, what you heard today, because we, again, we have experience. And we're going to do a deal, Henderson, we talked, we're going to have a loyalty program through rewards, full-time citizens of Boca. We'll figure it out. We'll give them a discount, probably let them pay a little cheaper and do a reservation quicker. No membership model. We reserve a lot of it. You know you're going to get a court in two weeks if you want, is our model.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one question. The 23 million, does that include the extra courts?
No.
That's the six.
What other thing? I don't want to be full of myself. I, I do get up every morning. She gets up every morning, trying to make the world a better place. I get up every morning and said, the most dangerous thing in business is when you believe your own bullshit. So that's why we're a good team. But the cost, we've done this, and I see everybody undershoot it all the time. Our core thing costs 23 million. I've done eight of them. It's up 50% in the last three years. We're desperately trying to get it back and so forth, but you, that, that's what it's going to cost. And we're going to sit down with you, the parks, the city. We, we've been working with all, you have a tremendous pickleball community here. We're working with the professional team and everybody. We want to make this a, a place to have tournaments and so forth. But it'll cost more than that and we'll have to get in partnerships with people, but we can do that. But we'll build that base thing. We'll figure out what the city wants. It will, we're really going to be responsible to the community.
Okay.
Thank you. That was impressive. As far as you give back to the community a tremendous amount, and we would be providing the land for this, but we also have a responsibility to all the taxpayers. You see them, some of them here today. And would there be some kind of a profit-sharing revenue for the district so that we could continue to improve the property around there?
Yes, we would take care of our, our property, the six acres, and we envision a revenue sharing depending on how many courts, so it's hard pressed to say how much. But in a sterile, we have a revenue sharing with them is what we worked out. So yes, we think we would be paying hundreds of thousands to you a, a year for it and providing, on, on the community thing, just so you know, her team does two to 300 events, one Chicken and Pickle, the one in North Kansas City. This will be the community center. We have private spaces to meet. We have, I have coming up this Saturday, a celebration alive, so we have weddings, funerals, Pinewood Derby. This will be the community center for your area, we believe. Did I answer your question?
You absolutely did. Thank you. In Boca Raton, we are going to undergo some kind of a transformation downtown where one of the big tennis centers that is operated by the city, not by the district, may go away. Would you be open to using some of that land that you were talking about for additional pickleball for tennis courts? Or are you not experienced in that?
She came from tennis. I converted her to the dark side. So we have danced with a couple of tennis places. We would be happy to do tennis or padel with, we almost put a padel next door. We still may too in Grapevine, but our heart and soul's pickleball. That's what's driving us, but then we want to be responsive with the community. You guys have more and more acres. I saw somebody propose on seven acres. You guys had to have two acres of tennis. We would work it out.
Thank you very much.
I'm ready. During the, one of the slides there, you had revenue, you had LBW. What is LBW stand?
Liquor, beer, and wine.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And by the way, I'm in a CPA, so today we had 13. They always take my budgets down. We'll do over $15 million of sales here. That's what's in the packet.
I, I, I saw that was mentioned and I was going to ask you if you were pretty confident you could do that number.
We think this, this site is as good or better than others of ours, and we have two on a pace to do 15 million.
Okay.
Two of the eight.
I noticed in your proposal to your hours of operation were 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and I know there's quite a contingent of pickleball players that like to play before work. Do you have any of your facilities that open up, say, at 7:00?
That would be a situation, we do it all the time. We actually open some at 6:00.
Okay.
Where we, our pickleball manager does. We, we love to service and they're in and out, but yeah, we open as early as 6:00.
Good.
For, for the pickleball. Yeah.
One of the things is we've been evolving and meeting with the community here. You have a couple of top-ranked players. I'd love to design to have a couple of the courts be a training center or a high-end training center for pickleball players. So we want to go to the masses, but we'd also like a place where they can do high-end training also.
Is your design limited to six pickleball indoor courts? Or do you have a?
No, that design we had up there kind of morphed into 12 indoor courts and even more outdoor courts. So I would like to have, back to that. We'd like more of these. These are the six indoor around our current thing. I would like to double and have 12 indoor and then more outdoor courts is kind of our dream.
To me, I think that would be very attractive, but because the dynamics of this pickleball is so large, it, it's incredible how much it's exploded on the scene. And I, I know if you add more indoor courts, gives you more flexibility for tournaments on a national scope, I think, so.
We agree.
All right. Thank you. Watch your step back there. I'm, I'm really concerned with the tall guy back there. Yeah. I'm good.
Craig, do you have anything? No? Okay. Thank you very much. I love your fun friendship and community part of your, your organization, and I think it would fit in really nicely here. I think we need more of that. So thank you for your presentation, and I think now we're going to bring in all the other presenters and we're going to do public comment, and then we're going to do discussion amongst the commissioners. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and open up the meeting to public comment. We have two microphones, one on either side of the seating, so whoever would like to get up? So whoever would like to get up and please say your name and your address and give us your feedback, please. Two minutes you have for. Please, give us your feedback. Sal.
Usually we get three minutes, so. I'm not going to take three minutes, but I'll try to get this. Wasn't prepared for that. My name is Sil Silavertian from sixty-two hundred Northwest Second Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida. The failed Ocean Breeze Golf Course failed after thirty years of support from the Boca Tika residency. It was mandatory for each unit owner to pay twenty-five dollars per month or three hundred dollars annually for thirty years. At sixteen hundred units, that's approximately fifteen million dollars together. It was starting in nineteen seventy-nine dollars. That's probably around twenty, twenty-five million dollars today. I don't know. I'm not an actuary or an economist. I'm not even a good CPA, to tell you the truth. But part of everyone's condo docs is a social membership agreement which stated, each unit owner shall and must become a social member of the Boca Tika Country Club, which membership shall entitle the member to use the clubhouse, the recreation building, and the tennis courts. We didn't mind paying because we had a deed restriction. The deed restriction stated use. The subject track land shall be used only for the purpose of a golf course facility duration. These restrictions are imposed in perpetuity. I'm familiar with the district's reliance on the conclusion by legal counsel, the brilliant Samuel Garance, a November sixth, twenty twenty memo, which states the unenforceability of the deed restriction on a government body. However, it seems to me the Boca Tika residents got the short end of the stick by paying dues for thirty years. I could think of around twenty-five million reasons why I imagine this to be so, but I'd rather not than dispute. I come up with a win-win-win scenario. This winning is a triple winner. And here it is. One, free outdoor pickleball for the outdoor courts, absolutely free, no signing up, monthly membership, public court in a public park, free to the public, open play, just like El Rio, Colusa Park, similar to a basketball court. You show up with a paddle and you play. Two, the vendor, that's a win for the public. Two, the vendor would have an unlimited stream of new customers for their exclusive food and beverage services and their fee-based indoor activity. The vendor wins. Three, the Beach and Park District will be adding to the very limited amount of free pickleball courts in Boca Raton, fulfilling their mission and purpose. The Beach and Park wins. All the pickleball looks very exciting, promising, capable of financially strong people. And correct me if I'm wrong, but any of them will be very successful financially on their ROI. However, one stands out. That is because of who is involved. That standout force is in the pickleball community by sponsoring national tournaments, promoting them, televising them. He is even a co-owner of a professional pickleball team. The team named Boca Raton Picklers. I've started with this guide of a level of one point zero. We have grown to a mid-level players.
Okay.
His name is Carl Foster. Whoever has Carl has a winner.
Okay, so we're doing three minutes per person. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Johnson, and I live at six, three, nine, five Esper Way in Boynton Beach, but I am a Palm Beach County resident. I'm also a mother to the number two pickleball player in the world in the men's division, my twenty-year-old son. And my daughter is top ten. She's seventeen. My son's, I said, is twenty. Chicken and Pickle came to me, to my daughter, about three years, two years ago, and they have sponsored her and her career. And the amount of kindness, generosity has so inspired her and her work ethic and everything that she's been able to do. And the projects that they've done with her have really promoted her as a young woman and an individual. And I came here tonight to tell you I'm so impressed with the way they have treated my family. The good, and it's not just been my daughter. It's been all four of us, my husband as well. And I really appreciate everything Chicken and Pickle has done. So they have already touched a local family that is very involved in the pickleball community. I also play senior pro. And they have helped the senior approach the whole aspect of senior pros tremendously by sponsoring a league called NPL at all of their locations this summer. And I just wanted to tell you that as a local person, I really appreciate the impact they've had with the Johnson family. Thank you.
Thank you. Residents, please come give us feedback on the presentation we saw tonight. We did.
Hi. My name is Pam Wilkinson, three, fifteen Northwest Thirty-Sixth Court, Boca Raton. I've been teaching tennis for the city of Boca for twenty years. Started pickleball like three years ago. I love it. I dreamed of going to a Chicken and Pickle for a very long time, and then because of Carl and Rick, I got a chance to go, and I'm in love more. I've been to four different ones. They're all the same. The service is incredible. The food is great. It's this, it's like, I forget which car I'm in. There's two in Dallas. I went to one, two in Kansas. I didn't know where I was because it was the same. The waiters and waitresses are delightful. You walk in and it's just families running around. It's dogs, little kids. It's what we need. Somebody said in theirs, they mentioned that there's not a lot of outdoor entertainment. No, there is a lot of outdoor entertainment. There isn't. On Sunday, I didn't know what to do with my daughter. We could go to the movies, but if there was a Chicken and Pickle, I'd be there. She'd probably be upset about it for a little while, but she'd get over it. They also have something called Next Gen, which is a young version of professional pickleball. And to bring my daughter to watch that, to have it in my own backyard would be incredible. So I'm very nervous and excited about it. How much time?
I don't know.
How much? Okay. The other thing is the memberships, right? You could just walk into a Chicken and Pickle anytime you want and hang out. And then you can decide if you want to play. That's what I loved about it. It's not a membership. Other places are memberships. I'd be a little intimidated to go in. You're not intimidated to go into a Chicken and Pickle. It's very welcoming. I guess I'm done though. I teach, I teach beginner pickleball, so I understand the love of it. I don't know. And the traffic. I am a little, I live in that area, Boca Tika, and I'm a little concerned if it's a large facility, how much more traffic that area can handle, because that is not a big road. It's only two lane. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chicken and Pickle.
Duquesne, five, three, five, one, Northwest Third Terrace. Very good presentation night by all the presenters. I thought it was very interesting. The last group talked about this is basically top golf for pickleball, which I think is a pretty good comparison. But I still, I still have a question about how you're going to be able to do this under your power. As you know, back in June of two thousand, the state attorney general specifically stated that while some special districts have been granted specific authority to dispose of real property by their enabling special acts, the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District has not. The authorization to sell, lease, or otherwise convey real property owned by the district is not among the enumerated powers set forth in the act. Some of the presentations and their written presentation, they talked about leasing, talked about a forty-year concession agreement. I think that the terminology of concession agreement, I would doubt that the attorney general would approve that. But again, I would hope that either the Beach and Park District or everyone's bidding contest would certainly get approval that this falls within your authority. You would not want to get halfway down after a year or so. Why not? Oh. You know, state attorney general says you can't do this. So let's hope that you get this approved by the attorney general before you go too far down the road. Personally, I think it looks like it'd be a good enhancement. There are a lot of things like traffic and things like that. Also, it would be interesting if you would use the corner and not all the way back by the railroad tracks. I think this might be a good addition if you put that right on the corner, whatever facility is with parking right behind it. Lastly, pickleball outdoors, I can tell you would not affect me for my, where I'm located. But I can tell you that the, about three weeks ago, Nightline had a special edition about the big growth in pickleball. And associated with that was the big growth in lawsuits against municipalities. So you can go on YouTube, you can see this, this article by Nightline. And that's why I think that if you're going to do this, you're going to do it indoor or have a very good partition so that the condo residents there are not going to be negatively impacted. But overall, this does look like a good addition to the community if you can get it approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nancy Foster, and two seventy-five Northeast, twenty-eight Terrace, Boca Raton, Florida, three, three, one. Three, three, four, three, one. Okay, I gotta read this. Okay, for me, one of the most important parts in development of a city is to promote recreation in all aspects. The families go to a place where you find how to entertain your childrens, find parents, grandparents, little, little kids exercise like playing pickleball. But I'm able to run and play with one of the important parts of your family, such as your dog. Or one place without having to drive to different places to have fun. I have been to Kansas, Dallas, Wichita for the tournaments they have in there. And I can share with you guys, the facilities, the atmosphere are incredible. Believe me, it's the best investment the Boca Raton can make. For this and much more, I am support Chicken and Pickles. That's come to Boca Raton.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Toby K. I'm a resident at six, three, two, seven Northwest Twenty-Fourth Street in Boca Raton. And I just want to say you've got some difficult choices. You had some very good proposals here for the Boca Tika site. The only thing that I would ask, instead of encouraging one particular proposal over another, is to say it's important to me that the proposal that you do go for takes pickleball seriously, that it shouldn't be a sideline, it shouldn't be a side function. It shouldn't be with, you know, like four courts or three courts outdoors. You need to have consideration for a serious facility with multiple courts and an opportunity for people to play. Whether it's membership-based or not membership-based is not as important as having a world-class facility. Number one. Number two, it is important increasingly now with the climate change that we're going through to have a facility that has covered courts. If you have covered outdoor courts or covered indoor courts or some combination thereof would be an especially attractive opportunity for Boca to remain world-class in the development of pickleball facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Barrett. It's three, two, two, five Equestrian Drive in Boca. I listened to all these proposals tonight, and what I kind of heard was four out of the five of them were leading with food service. And I didn't understand that to be what the Parks Department was seeking. My understanding is that you wanted a proposal that addressed tennis. And I think every speaker was asked, if we don't have any more tennis courts, will you add that to your proposal? That was what you asked for. The Robbie Wagner proposal led with, we're bringing you a world-class indoor tennis facility, which will have padel, I think you pronounce it, which is huge in Europe now and growing here as well as pickle. This gentleman just spoke about a world-class indoor facility. It should be led with tennis, especially if you're closing the city courts. Or if they're going to get closed, there's an absence of public tennis facilities, and there's nothing indoor anywhere in South Florida. We all know what time it rains here every day. We don't have to listen to Al Roker tell us. We all know that we need an indoor facility that will cover primarily tennis, but because of the growth of pickleball, pickleball and padel with food to follow it, not to leave it. I can't imagine as a taxpayer needing more restaurants in Boca. There's so many that are going out or are vacant or are not even serving the crowds that they have. I don't think it's a partnership that we should be thinking about in terms of what we're delivering to the public as taxpayers. We should have the sports facilities, which there'll be food service, which will be childcare, which will be charitable, focusing on serving the needs of the community. That's the only proposal that I heard tonight that addressed those needs. While we'll serve you food as well as part of the add-on is the Wagner proposal. The rest of them sound very interesting. Myself, I'm not a pickleball player. One day my wife tells me I will be. But for now, I play tennis and the ability to play indoors whenever I want to and offer it for the charitable purposes for the colleges, for the schools, I think that's what the city needs. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Dumke. I live at eight, five, one Northeast Sixth Street, Boca Raton, Florida. And I just wanted to express my support for Chicken and Pickle. I'm a beginner pickleball player, but one thing that I find when I play is the, the community. It's so intense. Everybody's so friendly and they start group me's and they, you know, invite you to come play and all these different things. Chicken and Pickle is so family-oriented. My brother-in-law is the one that started Boca Raton Picklers with Carl. And they've been to several of these places with tournaments. And every time they come back, they just can't talk about it enough about how, how fun it is, the family atmosphere, the food. So I just wanted to express that as a beginner, I look forward to something like this in my community, and I can't wait to try those fried pickles.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ferdinand Nelson. I live in three, one, five, seven Lakeshore Drive in Deerfield Beach, but we lived in Boca for twelve years. My daughter also plays pickleball. Her name is Isabella Nelson. She's seventeen years old. A fan of your family, one of the reasons that she wants to get better every day, Julie. Bella loves going to Chicken and Pickle to play the next gen. That's another thing that they do that I don't think we talked about. She travels everywhere to play the next generation. And I'm able to host most of the kids to my house when we have tournaments in Deerfield Beach or Patch Reef. And it's amazing the impact that's happening on those young kids. So you guys are doing way more than you can think. How the kids enjoy going and play at Chicken and Pickle and be able to dream to be the next pro in the near future. So I'm really hoping that we can have one hitting Boca to see our kids playing and competing in the highest level that they can compete. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Foster. Sorry about that. I'm a broadcaster. I'm Carl Foster, two, seven, five, Northeast Twenty-Eighth Terrace, Boca Raton, Florida. I appreciate the opportunity once again to speak before our Beach and Parks, who are partners for the Boca Masters. They've approved that two years ago at Patch Reef Park. We transformed the tennis facility into a pickleball facility for, for a week. And we've had over a thousand players the last two years, and we just launched and opened up our dates for twenty twenty-four for a third season coming up. And I know they're adding six more pickleball courts there, so we'll have twelve permanent. And we resurface and tape courts, so we end up with like thirty-six pickleball courts. I think most of you have probably been to the tournament at some point. So this past year, Rick Redamar, myself, we're talking about the senior pros, and Julie Johnson is one of them, and Georgia Johnson. And we've grown up with the pickleball community. I'm a tennis player from way back. Don't play tennis anymore, but there's a lot of tennis courts at Patch Reef that are pretty empty a lot of times. And there's a reason there's no indoor tennis facilities in Florida. You ever wonder why? Very expensive, very expensive and not profitable. So I admire the fact that they could build them. But the thing is, pickleball is exploding, as we all know. It doesn't take as much room, as much space. But we're supporting Chicken and Pickle. But we're supporting Chicken and Pickle host our National Pickleball League, our senior pros. If you attend one of these, we hit the San Antonio in about two days and they will end up in Glendale, Arizona, the newest facility for our national championship. There's over a hundred and twenty senior pros. They bring their families, their friends. And the place for five days is one big pickleball festival, park, food and drinks. They have the Be Amazing Room, the opportunities to bring your charities and your groups in there. And we, no matter what time, we come back after playing all day long, we come back in the evening, eight, nine o'clock at night and the families are still out there. They're sitting around playing, talking, socializing. That's what we're missing in Boca Raton. So I've been here since nineteen eighty-three. I'd love to see this and I appreciate the chicken and pickle. I do the broadcast and I go chicken and pickle or chicken pickle. But I appreciate them coming down here and traveling because they're very busy opening up new locations, but they are successful. They do it right. And they do it for the communities. So we're very happy for that situation. And this pickleball community is exploding. We're excited about the eighteen courts gonna be at Patch Reef Park, covered courts. And the tournaments are gonna compete. We're gonna have our tournament there. We'll bring the NPL to Boca Raton next year with the Chicken and Pickle location. So that excitement there as well as the television, we're live streamed worldwide, the exposure that the city of Boca gets. We bring over two million dollars in economic impact with our Boca Masters. With the Chicken and Pickle here, they'll be bringing about five to eight million in economic impact, just as a sideline. And the Beach and Parks not interested in money. But for the taxpayers, the taxpayers are gonna benefit from Chicken and Pickle being here with the jobs, the infrastructure, the opportunity and so forth. So that's the beauty of what's coming here and the revenue share that they're gonna bring. You want more tennis courts, whatever you want. This man right here, Dave Johnson, will build it for you. Tennis courts, padel courts, walking trails, dog park. He's gonna make it happen. I guarantee you that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
My name is Harold Chaffin, the president of Keep Gulf in Boca. The very interesting presentation this evening. I was very impressed by the YMCA because whatever they do, you know, I've been to a very, a lot of them, quite a lot of them in North Carolina, Arizona, New Jersey, New York, all over, and they really have it down pat. They, they, they're very citizen and community oriented. The, the other one I liked was Wagner. Wagner basically was gonna do everything inside where there wouldn't be too much noise. Because the weather down here is extremely hot, let's shake the rain, maybe fifty percent of the time you'll be able to use the courts unless they're covered over and then it's still very hot. The other ones seem to me more of just like a, a restaurant with basically you threw in a pickleball courts to basically to, to get the land, you know? And the other thing that was brought up also too is whether you can do it. In your charter, it stays that you're very restricted to what you can do. You know, and I hope that we brought this to many, many meetings to explain to you that you need to be. I know that opinions were opinions. But the bottom line is what the Attorney General would like you to do. So it's basically more advantageous for you to basically to find out what the Attorney General is gonna, is gonna allow you to do on this property. Besides, like I said, you have to think about the neighborhood and the community. This is a residential area. You know, if a lot of these places, these, the restaurants are basically for like a Meister Center or basically if you look at most of the sketches, they're all out in the middle of nowhere. There's no big gigantic, there's no communities built around the place, which is gonna create a problem as far as noise and disturbance. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Harold.
Hi, Angelo Sands, seventy-three, forty-eight East Country Club Boulevard, Boca. You know, a few weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with Beach and Parks and the city. And at that meeting, I, I discussed a new, the foundations of golf and the fundamentals of golf and the Golf Foundation. For the first time ever, non-golf activities are greater. By that I mean not playing eighteen holes. You know, the top golfs, the par threes, the driving ranges. For the first time ever, that income is greater than the income received at playing eighteen hole golf courses. Sport is changing. Sports are changing. And, you know, I mentioned something about Topgolf and there's so many other things going on. Pickleball is, is another one. You know, I think we have to understand that with times changing, where how are we going to initiate that change? What is best for the community? You know, what was just said concerning our area, you know, we live there. And it's, it's great. As far as the alcohol is concerned, you know, I think years ago, when states had to decide about money going in to build ballparks and football fields and the alcohol was needed to have those fields to be profitable, they found a way to do that. So I don't think Florida is gonna be any different, like any other state, you know? But I think what, what, you know, however mentioned it, is that we're talking about a park. What do we really want for a park? How much activity do we want for a park? There are thousands of people that live around that north park, okay? And we have to be considerate and thoughtful and caring for those people that living directly there. For seven years, these people have had to look out onto an empty field. I'm sure the values of their properties have not increased because of that uncertainty. You know, now I think we have to think about the whole thing. I think all of these proposals are great, pluses and minuses across the board, okay? But we also got to remember there are thousands of people that live there. Thank you.
Thanks, Angelo.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Bernstein. I work at the Boca Raton with Eric Silver, also part of the five oh one C three open court. It's one of the highlights of my week to work with the kids from the Boys and Girls Club, to bring them out, to give them the opportunity to, to understand what tennis is. I mean, they might see it on TV, but for them to hold the racket, for them to get some instruction from us to learn the game. And as Eric said, we're not trying to create champions, we're just trying to give them the opportunity. With Robbie Wagner's proposal, we could increase that. We could give more opportunities to more kids from around the area. I'm gonna beg to differ with Carl when his comment about indoor tennis. I mean, being at the Boca Raton, every time it rains, a student of mine, a client, will say, I wish we could go indoors. I wish we had the opportunity to take this lesson indoors. There are those people and then there are also people who no longer play outdoors because of skin cancer issues. And I have many students who say to me, can we play before the sun comes up? Can we play after the sun goes down? Because I don't want to be in the sun. I've had students who have had cosmetic work and they've said to me, I can't be, I can't take a lesson from you for the next three weeks until I'm ready, until my doctor clears me to be able to go outside. With indoor tennis courts, I don't think that would be an issue. So I think that's an excellent reason for, for the Robbie Wagner proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rick Reddamar. I have a property at seventy-two hundred Northwest Second Avenue, Boca Tika area, Sunflower. I'm honored to be in front of you all and I personally want to thank you for the work you do. I know you get paid a lot of money to do this, so we really appreciate what you do. It's an honor to live in Boca Raton. The parks, beaches are incredible, second to none, world-class. I'm simply here to tell you that I, we own the Boca Raton Picklers. We invested in it for Boca Raton. And I am very impressed. I know Eric, I know a lot of the people here and they've done a great job making a presentation. All I can tell you is from my experience, I have three boys. We have, I've lived in Boca Raton for over thirty years. My sister-in-law was here and she spoke. I met Dave and Kelly through the NPL, through our league matches. And as Carl mentioned, it's an environment like I've never seen anywhere else. Chicken and Pickle is like, to me, like Disney World for me. I'm just talking personally. It is everything that I could ever want. I wish they existed when my kids were growing up because it's the environment that I would want my kids to be at. I could spend three hours at Chicken and Pickle and think I was there for fifteen minutes. The amazing room, the top, the top floor of, it's an incredible place. Like Carl says, we'll play from seven in the morning, it'll be open to us. And then six o'clock, we're done and it's packed with people. There's just so many activities, ping pong, foosball, battleship, live, live-sized battleships where you move your actual pieces. So yes, tennis is important. There's, I go and play pickleball every day at Patch Reef Park. Every tennis court is empty. There's a line of people trying to get in to get the pickleball courts and the tennis courts are empty. The city is closing the city courts. I don't know why, but that's an opportunity for more tennis. Tennis is great sport. I love the US Open, it was awesome. But we're talking about pickleball and the explosion. And Ms. Johnson is very humble, but she's top player of senior pro two. She talked about her son and her daughter, but she's an incredible, incredible family. She came here to tell you about Chicken and Pickle, not about pickleball, but about Chicken and Pickle because Dave Johnson has a heart this big and all they care about is the community, charitable work. I mean, like he says, everybody has made great presentations, but they're doing it. They're doing what everybody else wants to do. And I strongly support Chicken and Pickle and Dave and his crew. I think they are world-class. And Boca Raton, that's all we have here is world-class stuff and they will not fail and they will give you a hundred percent on everything they do. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments? We're gonna close public comment and we're gonna open it up to discussion. And possible ranking tonight, I guess we'll get into that and see if that's something that we're going to do based on the discussion. Who wants to go first? Uzi.
I'd just like to come out and tell everyone that I have had, this is just for your information, there is, there's nothing, I'm not going to recuse myself and our council will cite state statute. But I have known Mr. Sacks from the Robbie Wagner group since nineteen ninety-seven. There has been no financial interaction either with him or with his wife Maria's campaigns. But I just wanted to bring that out so that everybody knows that, you know, if, if anybody else knew, I'd just like to bring it out into the public. So Jacob, would you cite those state statutes, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, for saying, and you are correct, you and I had a brief discussion about this issue prior to the meeting. And just for the record, voting conflicts in Florida are governed by chapter one twelve of Florida statutes, in section one twelve, thirty-one, forty-three. In order to have a voting conflict, there needs to be some economic bias or economic component, be it a special private gain or loss to the public official who's casting the vote or to their relative or somebody by whom they've been retained. You and I have discussed the facts relating your history and prior relationship with Mr. Sacks. And we agree there is no legal conflict for you to participate or to vote or take any action related to this matter. There is a mechanism under the sunshine law that would allow for a recusal or an abstention in the event there was an appearance of a conflict. But even to abstain when there's an appearance of a conflict, it would require some economic component. And there is certainly no economic relationship that you would have with Mr. Sacks or any other proposal that you heard from this evening. So you have full portfolio and ability to participate, to take action tonight should the board choose to do so and vote on this matter moving forward. You have no conflict in this issue, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Harwood.
Yeah, correct.
In fairness, since we're talking about disclosures, I have three disclosures to you. Number one, my employer is NCCI Holdings and as my employer also works closely with the Y. They've worked with the Y for many years to have a daycare at, at NCCI facility as well as a fitness center. I don't, I have been a member of the Y for many years, not currently. I've also been participant in their leadership, but I'm not currently. I resigned that role to, when I came on this board. Number two, for disclosure, in the same spirit, my employer at NCCI Holdings, I serve as, as a president and member of the Corporate Park Board, Peninsula Corporate Center Association, which Mr. Butters has a facility, a building adjacent to the NCCI building. I don't have an economic relationship with them or anything like that, but it's part of the park, it's part of the group. And the third item is, is my role at my homeowners association, Parkside. We do employ Sacks, Sacks and Caplan as the attorneys for representing Parkside. So I don't personally have any relationship with anyone there. And I don't think there's any kind of, I'd like to vote on everything we have here. And I talked briefly with Jacob about one of the three items.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know you and I did speak briefly about the, the various disclosures you just made. And I would agree that based on our view of the statute, both chapter one twelve and chapter two eighty-six, you would not have a voting conflict and are fully able to participate as well.
Okay, so we have full disclosure. I know nobody. So, um.
Can I start?
Yes, go ahead.
So look, I'll, I'll try to put some framework around this because it's, this is the toughest decision, okay? And it comes back to what are our overall priorities and things. And I saw proposals from several, doing several different things. I really, you know, going down the list, you know, I love the Y, the aspect of the community aspect, that is a need, okay? So I think there's some role somewhere out there for the Y that would be good for East Boca. That's an option and there's a lot to do there. There is, you know, a strong need for indoor tennis. I get it. The question is the cost of indoor tennis and how that all works. But we've had Nadell give a pitch before saying indoor tennis is a strong need, so there is a demand for indoor tennis. Far as the, there's clearly a social attraction that is a big factor in this whole thing. I, I do think that it came across both in the two pickleball proposals, paddle, the Boca Paddle Club. By the way, they have an all-star cast of who would build this thing. So my confidence level is extremely high that whatever would be done, they could do it. It's not easy to build anything in Boca. I can tell you that now, no matter what it is. It's just takes time to do that. But the, the group coming from Chicken and Pickle, you have a thriving community that is, you know, as people spoke about it, which is very impressive. So, you know, ideally, I know our chair won't like it. I think the best place for that would be over at Ocean Strand. But that's a preserve, so we wouldn't want to have that. But I think that is just a special thing. There's got to be a place that we put Chicken and Pickle somewhere in Boca. But it comes back to priorities for this overall north park, south section. It's a very large parcel. And I think one thing we've learned today is it's capital intensive. These folks are coming along with at least twenty million dollars to do this. We don't have twenty million dollars. And we're likely to get some revenue share off of it, but we're gonna bring something to the community one way or another. I feel like that most have touched upon a small portion of the parcel. It's, they're looking at roughly ten acres. The whole site is like forty acres. There is a hotel on the corner at one time. I think that we, we need the vision of that whole forty acres. And I'd like to put some of these people together to work together to put a more comprehensive just for that. And, you know, that's my initial thoughts on the whole thing. I don't know if we have to rank them one by one tonight. There's another factor that we should consider that is an outside portion of it is the city. I think it's important that the cities, we haven't gotten to their master plan on what they're doing and what's missing. But I, I want to see a home for Chicken and Pickle. I want to see a home for each of these different components. I'm not sure it can all fit on that one site. I would really like to see a golf concept of like Chicken and Pickle on the other side. Then you really have something, but there's a lot to do here. And I don't know that we can make that whole decision tonight. But we've got some good material to work with. So that's it.
Well, so we do have a master plan in sight. Well, so we do have a master plan, it's site, we do have a master plan for the southeast corner. And we were, we planned, from what I thought, the master plan for the southeast corner was to build out a small portion for the. Rocket facility, which is an RFP for, and then keep the rest as trails and green space.
You still have the hotel site and the hotel site was never identified and I'll be honest, I've always gone into this with the proposal. That hotel site should be some kind of facility that will pay for a lot of this. That could be the entertainment venue such as Chicken and Pickle.
Um. But this is right, it's, it's congruous, right? Is that the right word? It's all right there. So it's, so we're talking about this RFP for this one. You know, ten acres of property. So that's what we're discussing tonight. I don't think we're, we're discussing like the whole master plan for the park tonight, we're talking about this one small. Parcel of land that we're talking about for this RFP, right?
We can, we can talk about the one parcel, but I believe that there's more to do with the whole thing and I don't wanna be ignoring the whole thing. And I think to just say it's all trails is a mistake. Because it, all of these proposals talk about taking that front, frontage, locking off the back part of it. And I think you cannot ignore that back part of it, of how you're, the layout of the parking. And by the way, this piece is more critical than other areas because it has a connectivity. For the water, the sewer, everything else, and Charlie Putnam will tell you that if any one of these places, you're gonna pick to build something, it's here. It's not as easy on the west side. So, I think it, it's gotta be done with a um, somewhat of a developer mindset to say how does it all fit together? Um, and, and what we saw on the master plan, quite frankly, it looked very small, it's nothing like the pictures. When you say I want eighteen courts or ten courts or whatever. None of those little pictures, those schematic drawings that we got from Miller Lake for the south side are anywhere in concept to this. And so, it, it's jump ball, you gotta start over with that. If you're gonna try to build that master plan vision. Um, I just don't see it because the pictures that they gave us are too small for what we have.
Okay, Bob, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I think we're getting, Craig has a broader vision than I, I, I think that I, I. Came here tonight for, or I feel right now, I think that, you know, the, uh, the objective for us, we've had some wonderful proposals. And uh, you know, and in my mind, you know, I've gone back and forth on, on these proposals. Uh, originally, years ago before we even got to this far, after we bought the property, I was looking for an indoor tennis facility. And I thought that the northeast section of the, of that property would, that we'd now call the, the, the hills. I thought that would be an ideal place for it. Uh, but never envisioning anything like uh, the uh, entertainment a- and the social gathering that Chicken and Pickle. Uh, might bring to the, to the table. Um, the, the. A- and the YMCA, you touched on it uh, too Erin, uh, you know, they certainly um, ha- have a stake in this pro- property too. And I, you know, I'm not gonna start plotting where people are gonna drop, but um, whatever happens, I think that, you know. They're probably something to consider in our future. Um. I, I, I am still of the opinion that we need a, an indoor facility, uh, I, um. And an indoor facility that has uh, you know, uh, tennis and pickleball and there was one proposal here that had that, that I'm. Uh, still pretty high on. Um, but I, I must say is that um. I, I, I think we need to focus on these, this project that brought these people here tonight, uh, and. Uh, make a decision, I don't know that we, whether we need to rank these tonight, I'm prepared to do that if, if that's the, what the commission wants to do. Um, it, it will be no fresher time uh, than tonight for the, the memory of uh, what. These presenters uh, made to us this evening, so um, I, I, I think. If, if we don't wanna do this uh, ranking tonight, I, I think we need to decide uh. The two concepts here, there's one, there's uh, social centers with uh, with uh, you know, side benefit of pickleball. Then there are indoor facilities where you concentrate on sports and not on the recreation, the food and beverage component. Cause that's a, a, the food and beverage component was a big uh, source of revenue for these uh, folks. And for the kind of investment that, that they're willing to make, um, I, I can understand the reason why that uh. An offering for food and beverages is included, but I think that there's um, you know, I. I, I would rather see more indoor um, sports, pickleball and tennis than to have a, you know. Huge recreational and social component and my pickleball friends uh, will tell me that. Pickleball is a very social sport and uh, we've heard that mentioned quite often this evening. Um, and yeah, I'd, I'd love to see a, a, a Chicken and Pickle uh, in the community, I'm just not sure this is the right place for it.
Okay, Suzie?
Okay. Well, I think that everybody who came tonight came prepared and. I have read these uh, proposals until my eyes bled and I really wanted to be prepared as well and. Um, when Brienne gave us the uh, criteria to rank them by numbers. Um. What we were asking for was an indoor racket facility of some type. Um, the, but Chicken and Pickle come, have come in with, and also Camp Pickle with a um. A completely different concept, but such endorsement from the community. And uh, the YMCA, uh, I think that there is a place on our property for. Um, an additional YMCA facility, it may not be here, but um, right on that. Uh, southeast corner, but I think that there is enough land that the YMCA, we can start thinking about having. A joint venture with the YMCA at some point. So um, I'm ready to rank, um, I just hope we're all in agreement so we don't have a big catfight.
Steve?
Colonel, interesting stuff to. There have been completely different concepts all the way up and down the board. Uh, and I keep going back and forth in my head, well, what do I think is gonna work best? Um, my feeling is that. Our, our mission, so to speak, is to provide green space and recreational facilities. But the, the residents of the district, and I think that's where our concentration needs to be. Um. Like I said, there have been some phenomenal stuff that I heard tonight and. Uh, support for Chicken and Pickle uh, in the community, uh. Unbeknownst to me, uh, to be honest with you, before we uh, got uh, the responses. I'd never heard of Chicken Pickle, my apologies, I'm not as well read as I thought I was, uh, but. You know, we need to concentrate on what we do best and what we do best is recreational facilities and green space. Uh. And I'm also prepared tonight uh, to rank. Um, though I've gone up and down and sideways on several different occasions. Uh, o- over the course of the evening, um, but uh, I'll do whatever the pleasure of, of the commission is. You know, if we wanna wait another week or if we wanna do it tonight, I'm fine with either one.
Okay, um, so I have just. So the RFP asks for a unique recreational amenity for the residents, innovative and creative plans. Inclusive of the surrounding park conceptual master plan and sustainable principles. Um, there's, there was a couple of them that don't blend in with the park concept at all. Big concrete indoor air conditioned space, which is gonna just suck energy like crazy and it's gonna cost a fortune to play there. Because of the number of people that are gonna be able to play in the facility and in air conditioned space, it just doesn't make sense, like. Mr. Foster, Foster said, there's no public indoor tennis facilities because they're not affordable to play for the public. There's probably private ones where people with lots of money go and they play indoors. But to be honest with you, I prefer playing pickleball outside. I have never played under a covered pickleball court, which probably would be great. Um, and probably cool enough even through the summer months. I used to play at eleven o'clock in July. I'm probably an exception to the rule, but um, even covered courts would be just. Wonderful for our community, covered courts, covered pickleball courts. Um, and we're getting eighteen courts and I also don't want a facility that's gonna necessarily compete with Patchree. And then what is the city gonna do at Boca, Boca Country Club? I talked to the mayor today and another council member. They're waiting for us to decide what we do here and then they're gonna plan that. So. And what else? And indoor tennis and pickleball was ranked twenty-four out of thirty-one. On our needs assessment that we did, twenty-fourth out of thirty-one. Um. Tennis courts were pretty low as well and I go to Patchree on Sunday morning at seven thirty in the morning and. The tennis courts are completely empty, completely empty. There's lines up for pickleball. Um, so, and the Chicken and Pickle concept is forward thinking in terms of recreation. Boca Raton is kinda stuck in the past with recreation. We're not thinking ahead to the future on what recreation. Is already in so many cities throughout the country. We are behind the times. And we need to move forward. Um, and then I get nervous when I talk again now, so. I'm just, I don't wanna miss this huge opportunity to. Work with a company like Chicken and Pickle where there's cities that are paying them to come there. And they wanna come here and build here. We can't miss this opportunity, please. Um. I just, that's kind of all I wanna say and I think. Working with Chicken and Pickle, I know the neighbors are concerned about the noise, but there's nobody here from that condo. Not, from that condo building worried about the noise right now. And there was a hotel on that corner with a bar and a restaurant, which was a hundred feet away. Which they all have come and said that they want a restaurant there in this area. And I think having a restaurant that is chef inspired, but you can buy a meal for under fifteen dollars. To bring a family of four, which is affordable, it would be ideal. And to be able to ride your bike on the trails, use the mountain bike trails, use the walking trails, go to Chicken and Pickle. And grab a bite to eat, you don't necessarily have to play pickleball either. But some of those other concepts, I wouldn't go and hang out there. Some of them look like museums to me. Chicken and Pickle was a place that I wanted to hang out, um, and my kids would wanna hang out and my parents would wanna hang out. So it's all encompassing, um. And I just wanted to say all that and just, and if you guys want to rank tonight, I'd be happy to do that. Or we can have the option of ranking these um, at our next meeting, which is Monday. So, if you guys need time to kinda take these presentations and these discussions that we've had. And think about it and talk to more residents, that's up to you, or we can rank these tonight. What do you think?
Rank it.
Rank? Rank them tonight? Wait, let me get my thank yous. Okay. Steve? You're E, so you're up first, it's alphabetical.
Oh, that's correct.
Angle.
So, what, are we going in the same seed order or you wanna go in a anonymously?
Is this live?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for me it's easier if we start with angle just so I can go in order of my sheet.
Repeat that, Brienne, we couldn't hear what you said.
According to her sheet, it's easier if we start with Steve.
With me.
Okay, um, like I said, uh, I went back and forth a couple of times. And um, my ranking is entirely different than what I thought it would be. Uh, at the beginning. So, uh, my number one is. Uh, Boca Paddle, I think uh, they have the right combination of expertise. And uh, their concept includes a food and beverage uh, component. And it also focuses on pickleball, which is, um, if we go back to where we started. That's what we intended to do. Um, so, they're my number one. Uh, my number two is the Y. Uh, if you guys could raise funds faster and had a closer timeline, you would have been number one. But I agree with Suzie, uh, there's a place for you at uh, at North Park. And we'll figure that out as time goes on. Uh, I thought that Robbie Wagner put together a good presentation. Um, I like some of their ideas. Um, my concern is. Uh, the numbers that they had were, I, I felt kind of incomplete. And were too susceptible to surprises. Um. Chicken and Pickle, I thought you guys did a great job and I thought, you know, I was very impressed by the amount of local support that.
What's your number three?
Number three.
I thought I just said Robbie Wagner.
You didn't say that, that you were giving him three, so three, three is, is Robbie Wagner, Chicken and Pickle is four and Camp.
Yeah, Chicken and Pickle is four. Um, my concern is the emphasis, the heavy emphasis on. Uh, non-activities, in other words, food and beverage. Um. Uh, restaurants can come and go and I know you guys have an established operation, but. Uh, that worries me a little bit and Camp Pickle, uh, I don't wanna be the incubator. So, that's, those are my five.
All right, Craig, you're up.
Can't go less.
No.
Number one is the YMCA, number two is Boca Paddle, number three is Chicken and Pickle. Number four is uh, Camp Pickle, and number five is Robbie Wagner.
Erin, you make a very um, com- i- interesting uh, comments there, you know, and. And, and I value your input, uh, and I appreciate. Everyone who'd made this presentation because every one of them brought something to the table I thought that we could benefit from. I'm, I'm, I'm like Steve in the fact that I'm, you know, was thinking of recreation through the entire proposal. Um, my uh, number one is uh, Robbie Wagner, uh, number two is Boca Paddle. Uh, number three is Chicken Pickle, uh, number four is the YMCA and number five is Camp Pickle.
Madam Chair, I really appreciate your open comments about Chicken and Pickle. I know you live in the area, you have kids. Um, it didn't go unnoticed, I, I do hope that, that there is some. Type of uh, ability for Chicken and Pickle to come to Boca. Um, my first ranking would be Boca Paddle. Uh, Chicken and Pickle would be number two, Robbie Wagner, number three. Four, the YMCA, and five, Camp Pickle.
My number one is Chicken and Pickle, my number two is the Y. My number three is Boca Paddle, my number four is Camp Pickle, and my number five is Wagner.
I need a minute.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, I'm going to double check. I'm going to double check this.
Fine for dinner.
Okay, so this is like golf scoring, the lowest score was the highest ranked. Boca Paddle had nine, Chicken and Pickle and YMCA both had thirteen, Robbie Wagner had seventeen, and Camp Pickle was twenty-three.
Didn't hear what she said.
So our top rank is Boca Paddle.
So what are the next steps here?
So we need a motion to approve the ranking.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Is there any further discussion?
I mean, I think you ranked them, so we're going forward with a negotiation with the number one, but it also falls back, you're tied for number two. I would hope that this board would consider options for the number two, I mean, could we combine something? I just leave that open to the executive director as she's talking through these, as well as with the city. What they're willing to work with on any of these. What's the thoughts?
Did you make a motion?
I think the motion is, you said discussion, so I just gave you discussion, but.
Did you want to make a motion to have her start negotiations?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we make, we start, that the executive director starts negotiations. And I would recommend though, can we step back just on the discussion part of it? Is for this to effectively work, that contract really has to have a. Agreeable and work with the structure that we're given. So it's going to be carefully worked out, and the model for that to me is the Performing Arts Center contract that the city entered into. It's a good starting point, so I encourage our council to work with it as a starting point, but they're going to have to go back and forth, and there's got to be somewhere to start.
If I may, we know there are some constraints in the context of our charter language that were mentioned this evening as it relates to leasing and conveying property, we'll work with the executive director and then use the contract you referenced as a model. To embrace all the operative terms consistent with the enabling legislation of the district.
But it will also involve working with the city too, so. You know, we can give property to the city, correct?
We will, we will look at all options, Commissioner.
Good, okay. So I make a motion to, for the executive director to proceed with negotiations in the rank order that we have done.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.